Welcome, I'm Mayor Baxter and this is the City Council Regular Meeting of May 18th, 2021, 6:30 PM. May we have a roll call, Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Bossman?
Present.
Councilor Brill?
Here.
Councilor Yuta?
Here.
Mayor Pro Jim Noseworthy?
Present.
Mayor Baxter?
Present. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Do we have any actual or perceived conflicts of interest with the councilors and any agenda item tonight? Seeing none, we will go move on to public participation, which I forgot to pull out. Ms. Phillips, could you, is it possible for you to read the public participation?
I don't have it in front of me.
All right. I've got it. All right. Sorry. It's only my second time, you know. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to these questions. Councils should address their comments directly to the City Council. And if there are any public comments, our moderator Mitchell will, there's a timer here to watch and he will invite you into our conversation and manage your timer. Do we have any public participation?
Yes, Mayor, I do see we have a full attendee list tonight. We have a couple people who have raised their hand. First name I see is Karen. Karen, I've invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your first and last name for the record and whether or not you are a city resident and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Karen Pontius. I live at 288 Animus View Drive in Durango City. My comment concerns preservation of affordable housing in Durango. I last spoke to the council on this issue on January 5th of this year. I live in Riverview Mobile Home Park. On Christmas Eve, residents got notice the park was for sale, formed a co-op and are working with nonprofit Thistle. They help mobile home parks go co-op. We are in the home stretch. We close in mid-June. It's been a busy and educational four months. Our community of 116 households has come together and we've accomplished almost everything we need to do to complete this purchase. As a board member for the new Animus View Mobile Home Park Co-op, I address the council to ask for the city's investments in our efforts. Our goal is every resident here stays in their home. What this will take is keeping our lot rent increase as low as possible. Our funding is secured, but at the current interest level, it will require a substantial increase in rent to pay the mortgage. Even though that rent stabilizes for 10 years, most residents will have trouble affording that new level. If we can find grants or cheaper loans before we close, our lender will adjust the loan and any rent increase will lower. Our park's average household income is 65% of area median income. That's considered low income. There are no other options for most of our residents to live here in Durango. We're setting up a rental assistance fund locally so we can ask Durango's more affluent citizens to donate tax deductible funds to help some of our residents stay in their homes. Under corporate ownership, residents have become used to nothing being done on their behalf. Most of our sewer system is over 40 years old and there have been many sewage backups into residents' homes. One just happened two days ago. But now the whole sewer system will be replaced by the co-op. We've applied for a grant from the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to help with those infrastructure needs. A co-op is about everyone working together with everyone. Over the last four months, 79% of our residents have joined the co-op and are ready to move forward. Committees were easily formed to tackle stuffy documents and policies. Block captains stepped up, people that adopted 15 or 20 of their neighbors and serve as a conduit for information, questions, and social events. A neighbors helping neighbors program is in the works and this is before we even own the park. Our harsh reality is that we need cheaper funding for this purchase. Supporting our co-op is a great way to serve so many without even turning a shovel to build more housing. I ask the council to see what it can do to partner with Homes Fund and our co-op. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. We appreciate it. Mitchell, do you have, are there others?
I have only 16.
Yes, Mayor, the next person on my list is Kirby. Kirby, please unmute yourself. Give us your first and last name for the record and whether or not you're a city resident. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Council. I hope you're all doing well. My name's Kirby McLaurin. I'd like to read the statement of a Durango resident who is unable to sign on for themselves. Her name is Ann Talbot. She lives at 982 Sunrise Lane. So here's her statement. My son Lucas Talbot lives at Riverview Noble Home Park located on Animus View Drive. He's lived there for 10 years. This community is kind and caring and watch over their neighbors. Lucas has special needs and because of his neighbors, I feel confident that he is being watched over by these neighbors who care about him and all their friends. He's coming up on his 19th year employed by Walmart where he is also loved by all. We live in a wonderful community where folks are friendly. We've lived in Durango for 25 years and we're so lucky that we do live here. Lucas works hard for his pay and living at the park is the best place to live where he can afford to be there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kirby. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Mitchell, do we have other public comment?
Yes, Mayor, the next person on the list is Dan. Dan, please unmute yourself. Give us your full name and whether or not you're a city resident for the record and you have three minutes.
I'm Dan Hunt. I am a city resident. I'm a resident of Animus View Mobile Home Park. Actually, at the moment, it's called Riverview, but we plan to change it back to what it was for many years. I'm also the operations manager on the Board of Directors and a lot of what I was going to say, Karen said it. One thing that's been interesting for me going through this process is to find out that I'm not where I am thought I was financially. I'm lower down on the average median income for the area than I expected. We do have some savings. I'm 70 years old and I'm hoping that that savings will last me long enough that I don't have to rely on other needs for other things and be rent burdened like many of my neighbors And in talking to some of my neighbors that are becoming friends, and this is definitely changing from being a neighborhood to a community, there are people here that I'm really amazed that they voted for us to move forward with this purchase because it's something that they, will be very difficult for them to afford and will make their rent burden even greater. But they are tired of, you know, big rent increases every year and they're tired of, as I am, of the management and the owners basically stonewalling us on requests for repairs that need to be done, regular maintenance repairs. And so as a co-op, we're going to be taking those things off. It is very critical for us as a board that we bring everybody along with this process. It's not going to be easy. I don't know whether we'll succeed with it and as Karen mentioned, with creating a rental assistance fund, we're working on a number of different options just as those people that will have the most difficulty and tell us that they need help. So thank you for letting me speak and I hope that you'll approve helping us make it more affordable for the people that need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Mitchell, any others?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a couple others who have raised their hand. I would like to put in a reminder, we do have quite a few in the attendee list. If you are here to speak during public participation, now is your opportunity to raise your hand. The next person on the list is Jack. Jack, please unmute yourself. Give us your full name and whether or not you're a city resident for the record and you have three minutes.
Jack Llewellyn, I'm the Executive Director of the Durango Chamber of Commerce and I do not live in the city limits, but again, I am the Executive Director of the Chamber and thank you, Mayor Baxter and council for allowing me the time to speak. We have an organization that has come together. We appreciate the value of your efforts in keeping the community safe and navigating, obviously, these unprecedented times last year and over the last, over a year, almost 15 months now, has undoubtedly been very challenging. As you're aware, based on the scientific information with the CDC, State of Colorado, they've recently issued a new guidance that it relaxes the requirements of wearing a mask for those who are vaccinated with some exceptions. San Juan Basin Public Health also recently redefined its public health order and issued a new public health advisory following these guidelines. Americanized, the city of Durango currently has a city ordinance that requires face masks to be worn while indoors. The group that's come together, the Durango Chamber of Commerce, La Plata County Economic Development Alliance, the Business Improvement District, Visit Durango, the Small Business Development Center, and the Durango Chapter of the Colorado Restaurant Association have come to form this advisory group for businesses in our area. As leading business organizations, we request that you take similar action as the CDC, State of Colorado, and San Juan Basin Public Health and eliminate the city ordinance to require masks. We also have private businesses be allowed to make their own decisions about whether to require masks in their facility or not. At this time, we believe it should be an individual business decision and each business should have the right to make that decision considering the guidelines handed down from the federal, state, and local levels. And we are committed to working with businesses in La Plata County, helping them message and provide notices, signage that can be displayed on location and post on social media where they require, whether or not they require face masks. As demonstrated throughout the pandemic, our public understands that our community may need to implement restrictions once again if COVID-19 cases and COVID-related hospitalizations increase. Until then, we should allow businesses to reopen and implement requirements based on their individual business decisions. And we've sent a letter on, again, this is all on behalf of Durango Chamber, Economic Development Alliance, the Better Business Improvement District, the SBDC, Small Business Development Center, and the Durango Chapter of the Colorado Restaurant Association. Thank you so much and again, thank you for everything you do to keep us all safe.
Thank you, Jack, and I just want to let people in the audience know that council will be discussing this issue tonight under Agenda Item Number 10.1. Mitchell, do we have others?
Yes, the next person on the list is Coral. Coral, please unmute yourself. Give us your full name and whether or not you're a city resident for the record and you have three minutes.
My name is Coral Smith and I am a resident of the city of Durango and I'm just supporting what Karen had to say and Kirby and Dan Hunt in support of the Homes Fund requesting additional funds for 288 Animus View Drive, the purchase of Mobile Home Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Coral.
Yes, the next person on the list has called in by phone, phone number ending in 2752. Press *6 to unmute yourself. Give us your full name and whether or not you're a city resident for the record and you have three minutes.
My name is Sweetie Marbury and I am a city resident. I'm calling in tonight to express my financial concerns on Agenda Item 12.1, the Homes Fund Assistance. Number one, my concerns are if council allows for the $500,000 to be used from the fair share, it sets a precedent for other nonprofits to come asking for money from the city. Number two, a balloon payment in 10 years with a fourth position for the city is a very unwise use of this money. The refinance in the future in 10 years is like looking into a crystal ball with no idea of how to repay the city. A default on the loan would not be collectible and entangle a future city council in a burden that you created. Number three, according to Lisa Palmer in the document submitted, the $500,000 is not required to make the acquisition work. Number four, but it would deplete the available funds in the fair share accounts for all first-time home buyers as that was the original intent of the fair share agreement with the city to allow for mortgage assistance. The next point I'd like to make, that it is a breach of trust to use the Three Springs and Twin Buttes Fair Share money for this proposal. I agree with the staff report and I'd like to ask, when did the city council become a bank? Your job is to set policy to allow for developments to happen such as the VOA in Three Springs, Lumion 1 and 2, Cedar Crest 1 and 2 for seniors. I've never seen the council in 40 years historically be in this predicament. I urge you to deny the request from the Homes Fund or at least a minimum, seek the advice of experienced local financial institutions that deal in real estate loans. I'd like to remind you, the acquisition can happen without depleting the fair share funds and I do applaud the efforts of the mobile home owners to take control of their destiny. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sweetie. Mitchell, are there any others?
Yes, Mayor, there is one more hand raised. This person, this person who has joined does not have a name, they just have a statement. So defund. Please unmute yourself. Give us your full name and whether or not you are a city resident for the record and then you have three minutes.
I am a city resident. I won't be giving my name just because of the work I do and for the protection of the people I advocate for, but I am calling because I want to make sure that we realize that right now, our undocumented community is suffering tremendously with the pandemic and now with ICE starting to do its ugly bidding in town. For years, we have been calling for city council, a very privileged city council, to support our undocumented community by voicing their, voicing their opinion against ICE. A good step to show our undocumented community, who is a huge economic staple to our city, is by pushing for the bus service to go back on 160, extend to 160 where we have a lot of our immigrant population there who has to walk into town to their jobs, which is mostly in the service industry. So for those reasons, I will not say my name because I do work with a very sensitive topic, which is immigration. And I do ask for city council to finally start talking about our undocumented community, supporting them, and I ask you to voice your opinions against ICE, who uses ugly tactics to separate families. I know we have parents on the city council that don't have to worry what parents in our undocumented community are worrying about every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mitchell, are there others?
Mayor, nobody else has raised their hand, but we do have quite a full attendee list. So a reminder, please, if you are here to speak to council on an item that otherwise does not appear on the agenda, now is your opportunity. Mayor, we did have someone else?
Wonderful.
Laura, please unmute yourself. Give us your full name and whether or not you are a city resident and you have three minutes.
Yes, I am a city resident and I'm here to ask for the city council to please vote in favor of the Homes Fund for 288 Animus View. I'm a relatively new resident in Colorado, having moved here as a retiree and having wanted to move to Colorado for about 30 years prior to that and then found myself in the situation what real life was like living in a mobile home community. And the switch to resident-owned has given us all some degree of security and an idea that we have some self-determination in our future. So I would urge the city council to please consider us for the additional funding because, you know, living on a fixed income myself, it's, you know, our constant rent increases have been a bit too much. So we're, we can use all the help that we can get and appreciate your taking the time to listen to us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Mitchell, anyone else?
Mayor, nobody else has raised their hand.
Oops, there you go, there's another one.
Just as I said that. William, please unmute yourself. Give us your full name for the record and whether or not you're a city resident and you have three minutes.
My name is William Harris. Jack Llewellyn knows me as Doug. He and I used to work together many years ago. I've lived in Durango for, holy cow, over 20 years. Here at Animus View Drive, I've, I live at 288 Animus View Drive. I've been a resident in Durango for several decades. I feel blessed to live and work in Durango. I just wanted to help or hope that you can help us to continue to live here as affordable housing. This has been a tremendous effort from all of our Board of Directors trying to move forward for the affordable housing and I just wanted to voice my opinion on that topic, that I would love to continue to live in Durango and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Anyone else?
Mayor, nobody else has raised their hand. We still have quite the attendee list. Last reminder, if you are here to speak during public participation, now is your opportunity. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else.
Thank you very much. Then we will move on to proclamations and presentations and our first proclamation is Buddy Poppy Days proclamation and I believe that Suzanne Alson will be accepting this. Suzanne, are you still here?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful, thank you. So I will read our proclamation. Durango Buddy Poppy Days, May 26th through May 31st, 2021. Whereas the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars in the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922 and whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, widows, and orphans of deceased veterans and area children's programs such as Bicycle Safety Week and the Elementary Reading Medallion Program. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living, now therefore I, Kim Baxter, Mayor of Durango, do proclaim May 26th through May 31st, 2021, as Durango Buddy Poppy Days and do hereby urge the citizens of the community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support by the obtaining of Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. The officers and members of VFW Post 4031 urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this community who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Suzanne, do you have something you would like to say?
Yes, on behalf of the VFW Post 4031 here in Durango, Colorado, we want to thank you for this proclamation and with the Buddy Poppy program, the donations will benefit many local veterans. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do. We appreciate it. And on to Item 5.2, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. You know, I feel a little bit cheated. Usually I get to sign these proclamations and then hand them to the people, but we'll get there sometime this year, I'm sure. Hopefully sooner rather than later. Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And E. Chen is here to receive this proclamation, yes? Great, thank you. Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2021. Whereas the month of May was chosen as Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month to celebrate the achievements and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, AAPI, that enrich our history and culture and make America a more vibrant, prosperous, and secure nation. And whereas we commemorate the Chinese in Colorado, whose contributions and sacrifices were crucial in building Colorado during the late 1800s and early 1900s and who also suffered persecution, grave inequity, and racial prejudice throughout the state. And whereas we honor the Japanese Americans imprisoned at Camp Amachi in southeast Colorado, who volunteered aid to Grenada farmers during World War II food shortages. And whereas AAPI in America have a long history of human, civil, social, and worker advocacy who have distinguished themselves with accomplishments in the arts, literature, law, science, and agriculture, and who are currently on the front lines of the pandemic as healthcare providers, first responders, educators, and essential workers. And whereas the town of Durango was built on the backs of the Chinese who constructed the Durango-Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad and subsequently settled in the region as laborers, merchants, restaurant owners, grocers, farmers, and miners. And whereas despite these contributions and leadership, the role of AAPI in Durango and the US history has been consistently erased, overlooked, and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas we must also acknowledge a darker aspect of the AAPI experience in America, including a recent spike in racially motivated discrimination, prejudice, and hate crimes against the AAPI community and that amid rising anti-AAPI violence, Colorado currently ranks 13th in the US for discrimination and violence against Asian Americans. And whereas acts of anti-Asian bias are wrong and we wish to express our solidarity with our local AAPI community members in condemning, denouncing, and preventing acts of violence. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kim Baxter, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and call upon our community to celebrate Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States and look for opportunities to heal together and fight against the racism and xenophilia, sorry, xenophobia that still exists in Durango and across the country. E., is there something you might like to say?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Ms. Baxter. Everyone, my name is E. and I'm a first-generation Chinese and Korean-American and a Durango community member. I'm honored to receive the city of Durango proclamation of the month of May as AAPI Heritage Month and I'd like to take this opportunity to deliver a call to action and tell you all how you can be allies and support to AAPI and APIDA communities, APIDA being Asian Pacific Islander, Desi-American communities. First, learn and teach our history in schools. Recognize that Colorado has a fraught anti-Asian history and currently ranks the 13th highest in anti-Asian crimes and harassment in the US. Remember that the Chinese, along with the Irish, were responsible for the construction of the Durango-Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad, the primary reason for which the city of Durango exists. After its construction, Durango once had a thriving Chinese community, whose existence was all but erased. In Silverton in 1902, the Chinese community was forcibly exiled from town, but not before a town-wide boycott of the Chinese businesses during which townsfolk furtively patronized the businesses while publicly condemning them and while privately exploiting them for the low cost of their goods and services and while the Silverton Standard newspaper incited hatred through anti-Chinese rhetoric. It's not commonly known that the Colorado Democratic Party sponsored and incited the Hop Alley Riot in Denver that targeted and decimated Denver's Chinatown and displaced an entire Chinese community. That piece of history is relevant to towns and cities of Colorado like Durango, which edited out this detail in an effort to remain nonpartisan and frankly misses the point. In liberal towns wherein the climate of complex racial issues, liberals see themselves as post-racial and racial inequality is subsequently ignored. Towns like Durango consisting of predominantly white, of a predominantly white constituency that are so in denial of the possibility of racism that it continues to run rampant in nuanced and overt forms. So many Coloradans are unaware of the existence of Camp Amachi, southeast Colorado's Japanese internment camp, a tangible piece of Colorado's modern history that is so undeservingly forgotten. Recognize when you are reading xenophobic media reporting and that think tanks actively work to create disinformation and bias about the Chinese government, which is then handed to the media and then spoon-fed to unknowing Americans. Learn about how racism affects racially marginalized communities differently and how state and municipal governments historically pit racial minorities against each other when they place them in adjacent communities that force them to fight for resources, which laid the groundwork that force them to fight for resources, which laid the groundwork for today's ongoing interracial racism. Each racial minority has a different experience with navigating public spaces, and the ways we are victims of racism can vary greatly. And it usually doesn't appear overtly. Challenge yourself to examine which stereotypes you uphold and which microaggressions you and your peers still commit, and examine which stereo, and hold yourself and the people in your life accountable to deep learning and understanding. And in that, you must learn and practice ways to actively disarm and dispel these harmful practices. Challenge yourself to tell the people you love when they've expressed racist views, explicit and implicit. Learn about the ways your allyship might be performative rather than real, and what it really looks like to show up. Take bystander, take bystander intervention trainings so that when you witness acts of discrimination, you will be equipped to intervene. Understand that when BIPOC people challenge you, it's not to undermine or demean your efforts, but a call for you to respond in ways that come from a place of realized compassion and understanding, and in that, provide meaningful support for BIPOC communities. Know that when we advocate for ourselves, we are often seen as transgressors of peace by those with privilege and power who strive to maintain the status quo. Understand your privilege when you feel that BIPOC, BIPOC folks are overreacting, and understand the ways that we're dismissed, othered, and excluded from important conversations that directly affect our existence. Do patronize AAPI and APIDA businesses and recognize our contributions to Western society, and take a deep dive into what cultural appropriation looks like and the ways that cultural appropriation exists or has existed in your life. Use your social media platform to talk about AAPI issues and anti-BIPOC racism. Talking about these issues draws awareness to them. If no one talks about them, then there can be no awareness except within BIPOC circles, which become echo chambers of our struggles. Reach out to your AAPI, APIDA, and BIPOC friends and acquaintances. Witnessing your support validates our fears and struggles. When you come to us and tell us that you acknowledge what's happening in the world, that you understand that any moment, anywhere, we're targets of racism, and that you condemn it, it makes a positive difference for us. When you start understanding our distinct issues, that we don't suffer as a collective humanity, but as groups with unique challenges caused by systemic racism, AAPI and APIDA communities and BIPOC communities can finally be seen through the lens of humanity and transcend those challenges that suppress our safety, our mental and emotional health, our sense of belonging, and our success. And finally, do recognize how your silence supports racism and white supremacy. In failing to actively fight and challenge the manifestations of racism and white supremacy, you're allowing them to exist. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, E. We appreciate your efforts and your conversation. Moving on, we are going to 5.3, the March financial update.
Mayor and council, we have Devin Schmidt, our Budget Manager and Strategic Planning Manager, to give the March financial update. Devin?
Thank you, Jose, and good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I am Devin Schmidt, the Budget and Strategic Planning Manager for the City of Durango, and I will be providing council with a financial update for March 2021. I'm going to share my screen, and I am covering for Cynthia this evening, so here we go. So I wanted to start off with the strategic alignment. This particular item of the agenda does fall under financial excellence and transparency as part of the strategic plan. And we did want to let council know that we have modified this presentation as an effort to provide additional updates and transparency around this report and then in general around where the Finance Department stands. We will be posting this on the website as part of the March financial report, so just wanted to take counsel through the financial challenges that we continue to face in finance and the tense of past, present, and future as it relates to the finances for the city. So moving towards best practices absolutely takes time, and we're getting there. Our plan is to be in a really good position and a strong place and caught up by the end of 2021. But we did want to discuss some of these items that continue to be somewhat of a burden some for finance, so past council can recall some of these areas that I'm going to discuss here in the past. So staffing levels. We did not have a permanent finance director for a year, and we were missing several management level positions. With that is staff development, so we have started to replace a lot of those positions within the Finance Department. However, the development still needs to continue so that we're a well-oiled machine in the Finance Department. The forensic audit was something that we went through in the past, as council can recall. The 2019 CAFR required additional analysis and work of the finance staff to really proof and work through every bit of historical information, working through the fixed assets and things of that nature. The internal controls examination, computer security and access controls, cash flow analysis related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the business utility relief efforts that finance helped deploy, and then, you know, really just the confidence of historical information. Finance was not in a position where we could simply take what has been done in the past and move forward with it in a comfortable manner. The 2020 budget, if past councilor members, there was great challenges there with making sure there was accuracy and comfort in moving into 2020, which of course then put our 2019 CAFR somewhat behind. And then just the changes that we made to move towards those best practices with the 2020 budget and those methodologies, breaking out some of those fund analysis and moving forward with council appropriating projects certainly does require a lot of effort on the back end for finance, so that's really the past, and so here we are in the present. Staffing levels, council did approve for us to add several positions, and we're incredibly grateful for that, and we are hiring for those positions and have filled some of those, so we're moving in a positive direction there. We worked to help develop the strategic plan. Obviously, just the current transactional processing, when you think of a finance department, accounts payable, payroll, some of those core services that we provide, sales tax and utilities and collecting all those payments, and so that's obviously ongoing. The current monthly financial reporting and the change in formatting, we're working to try and provide council with good updates, but we're also, and I'll talk about this more as we move to that future slide, where we're headed, we want to make sure we're allocating resources in an appropriate manner. Implementing new accounting standards, and some of those pertain to, an example of that is how we recognize revenue. Instead of recognizing it when we receive it, per grant, we could move to more of an accrual basis where we expect to receive the funds, we book it as an accrual versus on an actual basis as we currently have. The 2020 CAFR is underway, and then the financial policy developments include general fund reserves, operating budget development, long-term financial planning, capital improvement projects policy, and the fund balance analysis that we're working through for each fund in preparation for the 2021 budget. So that's everything that we have working in process. This isn't an all-inclusive list, it's just the big-ticket items. And then as we move into the future, we are implementing OpenGov right now, which we're incredibly excited about. That'll be our platform for budget development. We can administer surveys through there so we can get lots of public comment in that arena. It's a great transparency platform via the abilities for folks to be able to really drill down on some of the reporting metrics. This will also be the avenue for our strategic plan dashboard, so we can provide updates and include those performance measures for council and the citizens to really see what we're doing and how we're doing. The financial reporting, we can work with council and staff to develop dashboards that each council member would like to see as it pertains to their areas of interest, and so that's a really great feature. And so we're very excited about where we're headed. Of course, all of this takes time to work on these implementation practices. The forecasting models does pertain to that fund balance analysis, so as we move into the 2021 budget, we are working on those forecast models. Cost allocation plan, we want to revise and revamp how that's been done in the past for the internal service departments that provide support to the enterprise funds. And then the other financial policies that we need to work through or review is the purchasing policy, the investment policy, grants policy, P-card, and travel policy, and that's not an inclusive list, but those are some of our big-ticket items. And then again, that fund balance analysis, because we have so many funds, that'll continue into the future as we get through the first more funds that we really wanted to take a look at and council priorities, we will be doing all of the fund balance analysis for each fund. So with that, I want to take a moment to pause and see if there's any council questions related to this slide before I move on to the next one.
I'll just say, I'll jump in, Devin, and give a huge thanks to you and Cynthia and the team. You've taken on a lot. You had much to address in 2019 and 2020, and I appreciate the effort you guys have been making. And you're right, it takes time to get to be in a well-oiled machine, but I'm sure we'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, and we're certainly excited. It's a great time to be in the Finance Department, so. Okay, so moving on, I did want to provide council with, and the citizens with some transparency and some background as it pertains to the Budget to Actuals report. So we wanted to just kind of provide some just general overall guidance, so the format is intended to be transitional reporting to OpenGov in the coming months, so as I mentioned, we don't want to necessarily allocate a ton of time to making revisions to this report when we're moving into a very robust system here in the next couple of months. Wanted to provide an update on what the following assumptions are used in this report. So first, and initially, we developed this in conjunction with City Council reporting requests. So we developed this report originally during the COVID-19 pandemic, so we were trying to make sure that we had enough funds in each fund really to cover city expenditures and make sure we were maintaining service levels. It is intended to be a one-year current data report, so not comparative. It's really a snapshot in time. And then related to the fund balances, I would say this continues to be a little bit of the trickiest part for us to provide enough transparency around for the public. And that has to do a lot with the differences in basis of accounting, so that's one of the challenges, is looking at this report from a budgetary basis versus the differences in accounting. The fund balances are also conservative in nature. In some cases, where we are still working to break out some of the funds, an example of that would be the 2015 sales tax, the 2019, where all of those funds were commingled historically. If the previous councilor members, we broke those out in 2021, where before they were, went all into one bucket. So some of those balances are very conservative in nature and looking at picking up where we ended in 19. The fund balance is also very much a snapshot in time, so while we prepare the budget annually, you know, we're looking at that as a plan, this is meant to say, here's where we're at currently. Incumbrances, wanted to kind of define what that item is on this report, and that's really future expenses committed by a purchase order. So that's how we explain the incumbences as it pertains to this particular report. And then when we're looking at that estimated budget column, operating funds are based on historical actuals for the same months presented as a percent from the current year budget. So we've taken historical actuals from what we've seen in the past and applied that on the operating basis for the budget. On the capital funds, the full year budget is presented because capital funds are not necessarily conducive to predicting what month expenses will occur. So because the projects vary year to year in nature and in scope, it doesn't necessarily make sense for us to say when those dollars will be expended year over year. So the historical analysis isn't a good option for us to walk through that. So I'll pause for a quick second and see if there's any questions on this slide, and then I'm going to move on to our sales and use tax. Okay, hearing none. We are once again seeing a really positive result around the sales and use tax, exceeding the estimated year-to-date budget. Sales and use tax overall is reflecting a 23% ahead for March, and so that's really positive compared to where we thought we were going to be down with an 8% as we prepared the 2021 budget. So year-to-date, we're looking at 15% ahead. And so if you factor in the 8% decrease to the budget, we're really closer to being around 7% up in this area, but wanted to provide that positive information for council so you are aware that we are in a positive environment for sales and use tax. We're also trending in a more positive area around lodgers tax. Lodgers tax really suffered last year, but we are seeing that come in a little bit better than expected. So any questions on the sales and use tax collections before I move on to the general fund?
I appreciate the correction you made to that table in the graph. That's given me more confidence always.
Yes, yes, and thank you for highlighting that. We did, we changed that, and then we also combined that in this slide too, so appreciate that. So there's no other questions, I'll move on to the general fund. You can see that the general fund is behind by just around $300,000. This shouldn't be a cause for concern. It's pretty typical that in the beginning of the year, we go into arrears within the general fund. Charges and services continue to be the area of revenue where we are somewhat down compared to what we would expect in a normal year, so we'll continue to monitor that and make sure that we're on track for that with the general fund. Any questions related to the general fund? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to the enterprise funds. And on the enterprise funds, and the rest of the funds, I'm really only going to talk about it if we have a red X here. So starting with the sewer fund, this continues to be in arrears due to that initial loan payment. Once again, this is one of those areas where if we're comparing it to budget, we could pick out some of these more one-time expenditures and provide public and the council with a better reporting metrics on that, so nothing for cause for concern there, just is that large loan payment still reflected. The Transfers and Services Fund is still awaiting the 5311 funds, and this goes back to what we're trying to work on as far as booking revenues once we request the funds versus when they come in. So that would provide more up-to-date and accurate reporting instead of having the fund reflect in arrears and then catch up later on down the road. The airport fund, so actual revenues are lower than revised budget forecast because of the billing and arrears, so full build revenue through March of approximately just under $800,000 is near even with the forecast, so we're doing okay there. And actual expenditures are lower than the revised budget forecast. Most small capital expenditures have not yet been made. Additional staffing positions are now coming are now coming online, and several larger consulting efforts have not been completed. And the variable costs such as fuel and credit card fees will ramp up through the peak and summer seasons on the airport fund. So before I move on to the special revenues, any questions on enterprise funds from council? Okay, seeing none. I'll keep motoring along here. So special revenue funds, the debt service, sales tax fund, we are a little bit behind on that one. I would say it's not a cause for concern at this time. We monitor this fund very, very closely because of the very strong match between revenues and expenditures in it. So we will continue to monitor that, but it is really the loan payables here that we see. So we, as I mentioned before, typically in the beginning of the year, we go into arrears and then we catch up later. So we should make up that $30,000 deficit. The Durango Tourism Fund is funded by Lodger's Tax, which is rebounding slowly. We have a couple contracts with the Durango Tourism Office that are funded through this particular fund. And once again, we'll continue to monitor that, but our expectation is that as travel and summer traffic starts to pick up, we would see that number decrease from ahead to behind to pretty much flat. So any questions on special revenue? All right, seeing none. We'll jump to our internal service funds. The General Services Fund, you can see, is showing some a little bit of a deficit, but these internal service funds are really meant to somewhat be a pass-through. And so it's not really a cause for concern that we would see this $43,000 coming in when, you know, we do have fund balance here, and it's not meant to be really generating. It's supposed to be just generally flat between revenues and expenditures. So I did want to point out on the SURF Fund, we have had some complications securing vehicles due to the pandemic. So, and we are working with our consultant to determine what an appropriate fund balance is with SURF funds. So while we are showing that we're ahead, where there is a large balance in there for what you would consider to be a internal service fund. So wanted to point that out to council. And with that, I don't have any other, you can take some questions on internal service or just in general from council.
Any questions, councilors? Thank you. Listen, I'm sorry. Did you have a question? I couldn't see you. So, okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much, Devon. We appreciate it. Look forward to the switch to open gov. And thank you.
Thank you.
Jose, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto 5.4, the presentation on the Literary Gardens at the Library.
Mayor and council, it is my pleasure to introduce Bill DeMare and Sandy Irwin, our library director, to take on this presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I am Bill DeMare, resident of Durango, and speaking tonight as president of the Durango Botanic Gardens. Thank you, Mayor Baxter, council, for the opportunity to discuss our request for funds that would help the Durango Botanic Gardens begin building a new garden that we are calling the Literary Garden. This will be just to the west of the library. I think you have a document there with an overhead view of where we would be placing this. We're asking council tonight to support the recommendation of the city manager to contribute $15,000 from the general fund to this new garden project. The overall project is going to cost close to $120,000. It's by far the biggest project we've ever tackled. And so while $15,000, just a little more than 10% of what we're going to need eventually, we still think that council's support of this would be a really important impetus, not just to help to get the garden off the ground financially, but also to give the public confidence to help us secure more donations. Probably many of you know that Durango Botanic Gardens began its public gardens existence back around 2010, 2011, when we converted what was then, I am told, I was not here then, the weed-infested area behind the newly constructed library. And we, those folks at that time, did develop it into an award-winning garden, and we've been building additional gardens ever since. We are strictly volunteers. We are a 501(c)(3). Our board members are heavy contributors financially to our operations. Believe it or not, they actually pay to weed and mulch. So, but this project, $120,000 is really beyond our reach without public help, without help from the public. So I think we also, we think that we've demonstrated to the community over the past 10 years that we can be trusted to steward our activities on public property. So this new garden, we're calling it the Literary Garden because our goal here is to demonstrate that nature and often gardens in particular have inspired or been reflected in many of our favorite books, authors, writers, poets, and artists. But we also hope to go further than that. We also want to introduce people through our signage, which will have like QR symbols and links to the library's website and our website, to authors from literary traditions that many may not be as familiar with, including indigenous writers and storytellers, the oral tradition from the indigenous people, Latinx, and often other underrepresented cultural and literary traditions. So we like to think we're not only encouraging reading and more diversity in reading, but also to create a special place for relaxation and reflection, a kind of mini park for that North Main neighborhood district. So in summary, we think this project warrants this financial support because it seems to meet so many of the city's goals. It supports the city's goals of diversity and inclusion by highlighting lesser-known cultural traditions and literary tradition, both oral and written. We think it also promotes environmental sustainability through science-based plant selection and water-wise irrigation and rainwater harvesting. This garden will convert a lot of water-thirsty turf into something more efficient. We think it contributes to sense of place by creating an outdoor space to be enjoyed by visitors and patrons alike. We think, again, it adds to North Main neighborhood identity. So we thank you for thinking about and considering this request for funds, and we'll try to answer any of your questions. And maybe Sandy wants to add something to what I said.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing us to present today. And I think Bill just said it all perfectly. I have nothing more to add outside of the fact that this is an amazing public-private partnership that has been going on since 2011. That means we're in 10 years in partnership with Durango Botanic Gardens. They've done nothing but improve the grounds at the library, and it's also a tourist destination. They bring in visitors for different conferences and provide a lot to our community in the way of economic viability. So thank you to Durango Botanic Gardens. We do have this item in the consent agenda, but we are here to answer any questions, and we're excited for this next phase. Thank you.
If I might add to that, for example, the North American Rock Garden Society, yes, there is one, will be having its annual conference in Durango in August. So that'll bring about 200, maybe 300 people into town. And they will be, one of the things they'll be doing is touring our particular rock garden. So, yeah, we think we help the economy.
Thank you very much, Bill. I wanted to ask you a question. In the documentation, there's an anonymous donor stepping up to get this whole thing going, and the city wouldn't be the first. We'd only be second in line at this point. So I was wondering if you had anything more you wanted to say about that.
Well, this anonymous, currently anonymous donor, I'm sure they will reveal themselves eventually, but they actually have said that any funds we get from the city would not count. It has to be from individual donors. And actually, we're doing quite well on that match. I thought we would have to go right up to the last minute, but I tell you, this community, I moved here in 2015, and it is unbelievable. When you, I mean, if you, I think if you have passion about something and you do something well, and you have a vision, they love it, they buy into it, and we're not going to let them down, and we wouldn't let you down.
Thank you. I'm very excited to hear this. Council, any questions or thoughts?
I was just curious how much you've raised towards that $25,000 match and telling us how much you have left to go.
Oh, Barbara, rather than not at the moment, we've done very, very, we're, okay, we're over halfway. We're over halfway.
Fantastic.
Yeah. And that's just within, I would say, a couple of weeks. So it's amazing. It's, we're very thrilled. But, you know, as I said, we've got, it's going to cost almost $120,000. So we have a long way to go, but this is a great start.
Well, I think the plan is terrific. I've looked at it, and, you know, I'm a master gardener, so I love what you're doing. Fabulous. So thank you very much.
Okay, great. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And can I add, if you visit durangobotanicgardens.org, if anybody listening this evening would like to make a contribution, no contribution is too small. So please consider making a contribution to make the Literary Gardens a life. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So the consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 8. May we have a reading of the consent agenda, please, Ms. Phillips?
Item 6.1 through 6.4 are approval of minutes. 6.1, the minutes from the special meeting of April 27, 2021. 6.2, the study session minutes of April 27, 2021. 6.3, the council meeting minutes of May 4, 2021. And 6.4, the special study session minutes of May 12, 2021. Item 6.5 through 6.7 are discussion and possible action items. 6.5 concerns resolution R2021-25 approving an additional appropriation to the 2015 half-cent sales tax fund and the general fund for the Durango Community Recreation Center. 6.6 concerns resolution R2021-26 approving an additional appropriation to the general fund to support the Durango Botanic Garden. 6.7 concerns submission of a rural economic development initiative grant application to support the workforce housing investment strategy project in partnership with La Plata Economic Development Alliance. 6.8 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Barrow-Chapman Hill easement 500 Flurried Road with the proposed date of June 1, 2021. And item 6.9 is final approval of ordinance O2021-10 authorizing an agricultural lease with Keith and Mary Fassbender at the airport and declaring an effective date.
Thank you very much, Ms. Phillips. Any councilors, are there any consent agenda items you'd like to remove?
Yes, I'd like to remove 6.4 and 6.6, please.
All righty. Any others? No. May I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda without 6.4 and 6.5?
I move a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus those two.
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Was it 6.5 or 6.6 that was?
6.4 and, which one, Olivier?
6.4 and 6.6.
I think the motion was 6.5, so I just wanted to make sure that it was 6.4 and 6.6 which are being removed.
Sorry. All right, so Ms. Phillips, may we have a roll call, please, or a vote call?
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Councilor Bosman?
Yes.
Councilor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nocesworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Councilor Bosman, would you like to introduce 6.4?
Yeah, it's a very small correction. The minutes in the package are of April 13th. So it's tough to prove that if you have the wrong ones in the package. And the 6.6, I might as well just continue.
No, no, wait, wait. We need to finish 6.4 first, and then we can go forward with that. So would we be able to say, would we be able to say yes to it if we agree that you would, or maybe you put the actual minutes on the next meeting? Is that what you'd like to do?
It's hard to approve if you don't know what the minutes are.
So would that be okay with council if we just move that minute to the next meeting so we can approve it then? All right. That work for you, Olivier?
Perfect.
Okay. All right, 6.6.
I think there's no resolution attached to this document. I'm not sure if we need the actual resolution to approve this, but there is not a resolution attached.
Okay, I was going to pull this anyway because I wanted to acknowledge the vote that we'll take on it. And I want the public to know, since there was this wonderful presentation, what the city is doing in this regard. So is there an issue, Dirk, for us with the resolution or?
We should have a resolution. We can follow that. If you want to vote to approve the item, and then we can bring back the resolution that can then be on the agenda.
Okay.
Perfectly fine. I actually support the topic. It's just a formality.
Yes. Would you like to make a motion then to approve the item, the support for the Botanic Gardens?
I moved the motion for support of the item 6.6.
Second.
May we have a roll call, Ms. Phillips?
Mayor Pro Tim Nocesworthy?
I'm sorry, whoops, discussion, is there any discussion? Okay, now a roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Nocesworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Bosman?
Yes.
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Councilor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. And Olivier, I want to say thank you for being so detail-oriented. I do really appreciate it, and I think council probably does too. I'm so used to being the one who does that, that I'm glad that we have someone else to do it. Thank you very much. Okay, on to public hearings. So our first public hearing is 9.1 Legislative and Policy-related Hearings, 9.1.1, a public hearing to consider amendments to the LUDC to allow RVs and vehicle sales in the L1 zone. Okay, so is there a staff member going to make a presentation?
Yes.
Hi, Vicky.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Baxter, council. I'm going to share my screen. Thank you again. I am Vicky Vandergrift. I'm a Planner 3 for the City of Durango, and I have a text amendment for you tonight to review. This text amendment was brought to us by Durango RV Rentals. That's a company that's out in the Grandview area, and it is looking to relocate, and it found property at 1473 Highway 3 to purchase. And the existing business, Salpine Motors, which was established in 2007 with a special use permit, which was a legal process in the light industrial zone at that time. So when they found this property, they asked the city whether they were able to have RV sales at this location, and the answer was no, that land use and availability. sales at this location and the answer was no, the Land Use and Development Code didn't allow RV sales in the light industrial zone, but we also found that motor vehicle sales were no longer allowed in the light commercial zone, I mean, light industrial zone. So we talked about their options and the first thing they asked is if they could rezone the property, but the property's owned light industrial and so is all the property around it. And then we looked at what the land uses were to determine if, what the compatibility would be and really the uses in the area, we have many storage, the bus barn, contractor's yard, large equipment rental sales, truck storage, so it really is a light industrial area. And then we also looked at the comprehensive plan and the light pink that you see along Highway 3 is, is our mixed commercial, light industrial, comprehensive plan designation. So it really wasn't practical or logical to do a plan amendment, or to do a plan, sorry, to do a comp plan amendment. So then we talked to them about doing a text amendment. So that's what's before you tonight, so the text amendment is to have, to allow motor vehicle sales, passenger vehicles and recreation vehicles, boat sales in the light industrial zone and we're proposing to do that by a special use permit. We also, the text amendment that's attached to your agenda document has that table as it should be edited and then also we had to change some of the criteria and all that really involved was adding light industrial zone into the special use criteria that was already in the code, we didn't change any other language. We did add the and rentals for recreation vehicles and boat sales, that's actually how it's defined anyway in the Land Use and Development Code, so this is actually a little bit more of a cleanup item. When we took this to, before Planning Commission, they, it was asked where are the light industrial zones in the city and so the light industrial zones are shown here, photo of Industrial Park on South Camino and then some, and then the area that's on Highway 3 and those are the only light industrial zones we have in the city. We do have criteria for, for looking at text amendments, so that includes, does the amendment support adopted plans and policies, is it consistent with some of the limitations and standards of the Land Use and Development Code, does it further the general welfare of the community and then also does it provide a community benefit and help economic conditions, kind of summarizing those. And we did find that it did. So in general, in our, in summary, the staff did support this request to amend the code, we felt this use was reasonable in the light industrial zone and particularly at this location. And we also believe that it's a minor change that helps two existing businesses and in fact takes one business out of being non-conforming, which happened when the code was changed. The Planning Commission heard this request at their April 26 meeting, they did recommend 50 to support it. Attached was the code red lines to your agenda doc, also the Planning Commission staff report and the Planning Commission minutes. There is no fiscal impact associated with this text amendment. As for applicability to the strategic plan goals, the, this action primarily addresses the affordability and economic opportunity, the text amendment will remove the non-conforming status of the established businesses within the city. In addition, it will allow a business that is currently operating outside the city limits to move into the city and these outcomes expand the economic opportunities for the two existing businesses and may support other business activities in the future. And our recommendation is to move to approve the proposed amendments to the Land Use and Development Code, specifically Chapter 2 regarding, regarding vehicle sales and recreation vehicle sales and rentals in the light industrial zone district with the findings as stated in the Planning Commission April 26 meeting staff report and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance to adopt these text amendments and incorporate them for the first reading at the regularly scheduled council meeting, the next regularly scheduled council meeting. So with that, any questions?
I'm going to, if there aren't any direct questions at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public meeting to allow for public questions and then we'll come back to council and see if there's any other questions for staff. So the public meeting is officially open, do we have any public testimony, Mitchell?
Mayor, so far nobody has raised their hand, we do still have quite a few attendees. If you are here to speak to item 9.1.1, now is your opportunity. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody.
Wonderful, I will then close the public testimony and counsel, are there any questions for staff? I think it's great that we found a way to move another business into the city limits, it's wonderful for our economic development, so thank you for being so positive about it and customer service oriented, Vicky, appreciate it. Do I hear a motion? Oh, wait a second, I'm closing the, well, this is written, okay, I'm closing the public hearing now and then do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move to adopt the proposed amendments to the Land Use and Development Code, specifically Chapter 2 of the Land Use and Development Code regarding vehicle sales and recreational vehicle sales and rentals in the light industrial zone district with the findings as stated in the April 26, 2021 Planning Commission staff report and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance to adopt these text amendments and incorporate them for a first reading at a regular scheduled city council meeting.
Second.
May we have a, oh, any discussion? No, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you. So now we're on to 9.2, which is quasi judicial hearings, our first one is 9.2.1, a public hearing to consider the Chozer addition, annexation and initial zoning 1715 Florida Road, do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Nicole Killian, Community Development Assistant Director, I am going to be covering this for Scott Shine who cannot join us tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can you all see that?
Yes, thank you.
So this is a very simple annexation, it's only 1 point, or 0.12 acres, called a Chozer annexation and as part of annexation, just for those of you that are new to city council, annexation is when we bring in new property into the city of Durango city limits, so this is currently island, enclave island in the county, so it's surrounded by city limits. And we, when we bring in new property, we also put zoning on that property and so that's what this item is tonight. So again, it's a small enclave, so it's surrounded by city zone properties. This property is critical for right-of-way dedication, that's going to be for the construction of the Mountain Trace 2 and Timber Trails projects. The comp plan land use designation has it as residential high and so the initial zoning that's being proposed will be residential medium density, which meets our comp plan. So just for context, for context, this is the site we are looking at, again, 0.12 acres, this is the Mountain Trace 1, this is the new Mountain Trace 2 that was just before you and the Timber Trails developments, Florida Road along here, this is Metz Lane and so Metz Lane will continue and it's required to connect to Florida Road with the amount of new residential units that will be coming in with Mountain Trace 2 and Timber Trails and so this road connection is vital for those developments and therefore this property is needed, as you can see, in order for us to get the rest of that right-of-way for Metz Lane. So again, just a comprehensive plan to show in the surrounding areas, this is important because this property will be coming in as medium density, which meets our comp plan, but what we've done in the past when there's an existing use, for instance, in this case they have an existing commercial service business on this site, is we allow them to continue that business as grandfathered in, but if there's any, ever any redevelopment of the site, then it needs to commit to compliance with the new zoning and comp plan designation. And in this case, because the site's so small, because of the right-of-way dedications, they're also going to be required to consolidate it with this larger lot when it does come into this, when they do redevelop, so not right now, but at redevelopment time. So again, just kind of a blow up shot so you can see how small this lot is and so if they ever wanted to redevelop that, they would have to consolidate it with this larger lot and same for this larger lot, they would need to consolidate. And so the city is getting 30 feet of right-of-way, a lot for Metz Lane and then 10 feet of right-of-way along Florida, which would align with the current right-of-way lines. So this is just showing you what's the building that's out there right now. This is the plat, this is what we used for the annexation to get it recorded and finalized through the county clerk recorder. This, again, it's a very simple annexation, but the agreement does require, and so again, I'm going to take a step back for new council members, but when we do an annexation, we also require annexation agreement and that is between the city and the developer or the property owner that's bringing it into the city and this spells out the requirements for the annexation to occur. And again, this document we do also record with the annexation plat and so again, this spells out that we're going to allow the commercial use to remain until they want to redevelop the property and it also spills out what dimensions and right-of-way dedication the city will be receiving and why that is important, again, this is for Metz Lane's connectivity to Florida Road. This project, we, we review it based on the LUDC criteria, which we actually is mirroring the state statute for annexations and then, so it does meet our criteria as well as the comp plan's criteria for annexation. We did not receive any formal comments, nor at the Planning Commission did they receive any formal comments, we just had some general inquiries about annexations along Florida Road when this project was posted. And so the recommended motion of the Planning Commission is to approve the Chozer annexation and initial zoning with the findings as discussed in the hearing and outlined in the staff report. The other two possible motions would be to continue or deny the application. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Nicole, appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and open the public meeting, is there an applicant out there who needs to make a presentation?
I believe the applicant is wishing not to present unless there's any specific questions and then Josh Mack, Mitchell is in the audience if need be.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll have the public testimony, Mitchell, do we have anyone who wants to make some testimony?
Mayor, nobody has raised their hand yet, but if anyone would like to speak to item 9.2.1, now is the time. Not seeing anybody raise their hand.
Thank you, I will go ahead and close the public testimony and then ask council if there are questions of staff or the representative.
Mayor, I do see Josh Mack has raised his hand, would you, I believe he was the developer, would you like him?
Sure, if he has something he'd like to say, we'd love to hear it.
Josh, I have added you as a panelist, if you would like to turn on your camera and address city council.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that looking at the agenda packet, the plat that is in there was the first version and there's a memorandum as well, Dan Armentano, which just required some largely minor changes to that and that has been submitted, so all the issues that, and requested that we change on the plat and that memorandum have been addressed and the planning department has a revised plat in their possession that meets those to be recorded.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Oh, good, there you are, hi. So counsel, are there any questions?
Hi, Nicole, Olivier here, I have two small questions, one on the setback of the building to the road that is proposed, is that all in compliance, also for pedestrian and bicycles? I mean, the annexation makes perfect sense, I'm not even in that topic, but the other question was more for my understanding, why was this never annexed as part of the rest?
So to answer the first one, the setbacks will be impacted if it was a commercial use, it really depends on the use, our setbacks and so again, we're going to allow this use to remain in this building and it'll be considered non-conforming, so it will not meet the city's standards, but as long as it's remaining that exact use, that's, that's okay, if they decide to redevelop it or do what we call a change of use and put something else in there, then that kicks in the requirements for city to look at setbacks and all of that. So at this point in time, we would consider this a non-conforming use and a situation. But to answer your second question, I don't know the exact history and Josh might be able to add that, but I believe at the time, the property owner was not wanting to annex this property when we were looking at the other properties in the surrounding area, but Josh might have a little more specifics as to why.
Yeah, I can add a little bit on that, the long and short of it is that Mr. Chozer didn't own this small piece of property at the time that the city approved the last annexation in 2004. He sold this and some other property to a person named Trummel way, way back in the 70s and then in 2004, this was approved and I guess Ms. Trummel was unable to, to participate or to sign on to this annexation, so they did with this little island in holding left out. And then in 2010, Mr. Chozer bought it back from Trummel, but by that time, the, the annexation was, was over, so that's how we ended up with this unusual in holding.
Sir Bosman, I can add a little bit, you know, in Colorado, the city could force an annexation, but that's not something that city has generally practiced and so again, that's why that piece was left out at that time, but you can, if it's an enclave, there are ways the city can require annexations, we just didn't move forward that process for this one.
No, that's perfectly fine, I appreciate both of you answering that question.
So Olivier's question brought up one for me, I just want to ask about the, where the road will be, will it, it won't preclude sidewalks and standard road with, because of where the commercial building is, or will we be missing some of that?
There will be a full 16-foot right, there's a 30-foot right on the adjacent property, so with this, there'll be the full 16-foot right of it, my understanding is that that'll be sufficient for, for a normal width street with curb gutter and sidewalk and that that will not require removal of the existing building.
Excellent, thank you.
That's correct, yeah, it's a local street standard, Mayor Baxter, so that all the sidewalk and curb gutter will all be within the right-of-way area that we're getting, not on the property side of it.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions by council? Do we have a motion on this topic?
I move to approve the Chozer addition, annexation and initial zoning with the findings and conditions as reflected in the Planning Commission staff report in minutes of March 22, 2021 and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance for the first reading at the next city council meeting.
I second. Is there any further discussion? No, may we have a roll call, Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you all. All right, on to 9.2.2, a public hearing to consider the Adams Right-of-Way Abandonment, 301 West 32nd Street. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Olivia.
Good evening, council members, I'm going to share my screen. Good evening, council members. I'm going to share my screen. And then I'm going to start the presentation. I might have to switch. Are you seeing my notes?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. I'm Leah Campbell, Planner One with the Community Development Department. I'll be presenting on the Adams right-of-way abandonment project number 2176. This project is a request from owners of 301 West 32nd Street that the city of Durango abandoned a 10-foot wide by 110-foot long portion of right-of-way adjacent to their property at 301 West 32nd Street. The total area of this requested right-of-way abandonment is 1,100 square feet. The house was built in 1994, and the current owners, Patrick and Rose Marie, have owned it since 2014. The house is encroaching about five feet into the right-of-way, and applicants are requesting the abandonment to clean up the encroachment, ensuring that all buildings on the property are within the property lines. A portion of the driveway will remain in the right-of-way. This abandonment request is consistent with the previous abandonment on the block across West 32nd Street from the subject property in 1957 by ordinance number 912. A 10-foot wide portion of right-of-way was abandoned to the adjacent property owners along West Third Avenue from West 29th Street to West 32nd Street. So here's an aerial view of the property at 301 West 32nd. And here is the legal survey. This is the 100, 1,100 square foot portion of right-of-way that they're requesting the city abandon to the property. As you can see, the existing house encroaches into the right-of-way. Land Use and Development Code Section 6-3-14-2 considers four questions when evaluating abandonment requests. They are, is the requested abandonment in conflict with adopted plans or policies? Will it land lock any parcels of land? Will the abandonment restrict the access of any parcel? And will it result in any adverse impacts on health, safety, and/or welfare of the community? Staff has reviewed the proposed abandonment and finds that the criteria listed have been met. Staff received no public comments regarding this project. And city staff in the City of Durango Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed Adams right-of-way abandonment with the findings that the abandonment is in conformance with the criteria as outlined in the Land Use and Development Code with the following condition, the abandoned portion of right-of-way shall be covered with an easement for utility and drainage purposes. Other two possible motions would be to continue or to deny this abandonment request.
Thank you, Leah. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And is there a presentation by the applicant?
My applicant is Ashley Truitt. I don't believe she has a presentation, but she's here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Public testimony. Mitchell, are there any speakers?
Mayor, I do not see anybody who has raised their hand yet, but if you are here to speak to item 9.2.2, please raise your hand now. I don't see anybody who has raised their hand, but I did admit Ashley as a panelist. So if she wants to address council, she is able to.
Thank you. I'll close the public testimony. Is there, are there any questions by council? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'll close the public hearing. And do we have a motion on this topic?
I can make a motion to conduct a public hearing to consider, am I on the right one? Yeah, okay, sorry. To conduct a public hearing to consider public testimony and comment, and thereafter, direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading at the next regular scheduled city council meeting authorizing the granting of a right-of-way abandonment to Patrick and Rosemary Owens, as described in the attached documentation.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Maybe we have a roll call, please.
All right, about that, here we go. Counselor Yussup?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman? Mayor Pro Tim Nocerwelly?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you all very much. Now we'll move on to item 10.1, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution related to masks within the city. I think Attorney Dirk Nelson will be our presenter. Yes?
Yes, I will have a brief few comments here. As you recall, council extended the emergency mask ordinance that's been in effect in the city since November. At its last meeting, that extension was to midnight today. So without some further action of council, that ordinance, the emergency ordinance will lapse, therefore creating a situation where there's no mask order to be enforced by the city itself. Council at that time, at its last meeting, asked that a resolution be prepared regarding, you know, mask wearing in the city. That was done. After that was prepared and loaded with the agenda, there was some significant changes in the CDC advice regarding mask wearing in general, particularly as it relates to vaccinated people. The governor's orders have, were changed over the weekend. And as you heard earlier, the Salmon Basin Health amended its order to an advisory, also essentially following that CDC advice. So based on those changes, the mayor suggested some amendments to the resolution that had previously been provided to council. That amended resolution was added to the agenda packet yesterday afternoon. So at this point, you have two potential resolutions. The first one that was drafted prior to the CDC change, and one with amendments that follow the CDC change in advice for council review and consideration.
Dirk, what resolution number would this be, whichever one we chose?
That's a good question. Let me check with, Amy sent me a list, and I will, it should be 27.
Okay. And when you sent out the updated proposed resolution, were there any objecting comments by council?
I didn't get any. No.
No, okay. In that case, I would actually like to read the updated draft, updated resolution, so that the public knows what it is that we're talking about and voting on and discussing. So here we go. A resolution related to face mask requirements in the city of Durango and support for the rights of individuals and businesses to be free to choose how to protect themselves from COVID-19. Whereas the city adopted an emergency ordinance on November 23, 2020, requiring face masks under certain conditions within the city and providing for enforcement mechanisms. That emergency ordinance has been repeatedly extended, and the most current extension expires on May 18, 2021. And whereas the conditions within the city have changed significantly since the adoption of the original mask ordinance, including the availability of vaccines for all who desire them. And whereas the CDC has issued new guidelines advising that fully vaccinated people do not need to wear a mask or physically distance during outdoor or indoor activities, large or small, with few exceptions. And whereas Governor Polis adopted the new federal guidance for the state of Colorado that says vaccinated people no longer need to wear masks in most places. And whereas in the general population of La Plata County, over 47% of residents have been vaccinated, and in those over 12 years of age, over 54% have been vaccinated. And whereas the city wishes to support our community in returning to normal activities. And whereas the city desires to support the operation of businesses within the city and the choices of businesses as to how to enforce mask requirements in individual establishments. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Durango in regular meeting assembled, that the requirement to wear masks within the city as defined in the above-described emergency ordinance shall be allowed to lapse on May 18, 2021, and the city shall not actively enforce a mask-wearing requirement after that date. The residents of and visitors to the city are encouraged to be vaccinated in order to cut their risk of getting infected and spreading the virus to other unvaccinated individuals. The residents of and visitors to the city are encouraged to comply with all other health or mask orders then in effect, and to honor the requirements imposed by individual businesses for mask wearing. Businesses are encouraged to comply with all other health or mask orders then in effect, and to make individual decisions on how best to enforce those requirements within each of those businesses. Enforcement actions by businesses may include the use of the trespass provisions of the city code to seek the removal of patrons who refuse to comply with the lawful mask-wearing requirements. Nothing in this resolution intends to force businesses to not require face mask, face covering, or social distancing. Rather, this resolution empowers businesses and people to make those, these choices for themselves. The provisions of this resolution shall be effective upon passage by the city council and shall remain in force until further action of the city councils. So do we have any comments or any thoughts about the resolution?
Well, Mayor Baxter, first, my apologies for not coming back with you on the comments. I was, I just wish we kept it simple and just referred to the CDC and state guidelines. I think both of them are fine. The only concern I have in the revised version, which is almost the same as the first version of the two that were presented, is it puts in some non-relevant information, like vaccination records and encouragement to vaccinate, which to me, we should, I think people are free to choose, so leave that up to them. And there's maybe also some question about availability for vaccines for all who desire them, young children. There is no vaccine. But that would require another revision. So if it's up to me, and my preference would be the first one, before revisions, as long as it means we're following and complying with CDC and state requirements.
So any other comments, or do we have a motion?
Dirk, can you give us the number again, please?
Yes, it would be 27, 20, R. 2021-27.
And that's the first or the second?
Either the one you make a motion on, film that number, yeah.
I move to adopt the, the resolution read by the mayor, resolution number 2021-27.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Maybe we have a roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Counselor Yussup?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nocerwelly?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you. I discussed this earlier with our city manager, Jose, and I think he might have some additions to this conversation.
Yeah, absolutely. As soon as pointing to make sure that the resolution got passed, that I've asked Tom, our media and community engagement director, to reach out to bid and the Chamber of Commerce starting tomorrow, to make sure that any signage is, that businesses want to use is conformed, so that it's easy to read, that it all kind of follows a, what I would call, you know, solidarity in the pattern, so that we don't have a lot of different signs, a lot of confusion, really in a way to have more of that outreach to the community, so everyone kind of understands what, what is going on and how those would impact them. So Tom will be reaching out to Chamber and the bid starting tomorrow morning.
Wonderful. Thank you. I know that one of the larger confusions around the nation is, how do you know which business is mask required or not mask required? So I think this will help a lot.
I would just add, at the chamber meeting today, they were, you know, still really encouraging people to still bring a mask, because it is business-dependent. And, you know, they have the right to refuse service. No shirts, no shoes, no mask, no service if they want. So everyone is still encouraged to bring their masks.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Okay, now we're moving on to 12.1, discussion and possible action concerning a request by La Plata County Homes Fund for city funding assistance towards acquisition and preservation of Animus View Mobile Home Park by the Animus View MHP. Do we have a staff person to present some information for us?
Yes, we do, city council. I have Kevin Hall, our managing director of community development, with the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Baxter and fellow counselors. Before you tonight, we have a proposal from Homes Fund that is part of the agenda packet that you received with the staff report. The staff report very much focuses in on, the staff reviewing the proposal relative to using existing housing funds for the request. This is a pretty unique proposal in that this doesn't really fit into any particular category of either process or programs that we currently have in place. It's definitely a unique one that came forward to you on April 27 through Homes Fund. Since that time, we've done a little bit, little bit more homework from a staff level, reviewed the proposal, took a look at the funding alternatives, if there's interest in undertaking this effort. I would say that what's in the staff report, the proposal that's in there that is kind of a path forward, if you will, is a little different than what you found in the April 27 proposal. With what work was done by staff, is we reviewed the proposal, which is essentially Homes Fund requesting that the city provide $500,000 towards the financing of the mobile home park, which is being purchased by a cooperative. The cooperative was made aware last year that the property was for sale. Prior, when the property did, when they did receive notice, there was no co-op. It was just 116 residents. Once that notice came through, they organized, formed a co-op, found a company out of Boulder, that a nonprofit company out of Boulder that does these types of things, where they help the residents of mobile home parks to purchase the property to preserve it long-term. So they worked with Thistle, is the name of the company that they worked with out of Boulder. And they also reached out to Homes Fund, and between the two of those agencies, worked through some processes that have positioned them to acquire the property in the coming month to two months. What came before the city is an ask from Homes Fund to essentially participate in that financing to the tune of $500,000. The proposal from Homes Fund, I'm going to let, when I'm done speaking, you can invite Lisa Blumquist Palmer, executive director of Homes Fund, to kind of walk you through the proposal and walk you through probably some of the questions you might have regarding it. What I would like to do is briefly cover a couple of points in terms of what I saw when this came through, and then we kind of queued it up for your conversation tonight. Obviously, this is very much a policy decision, because we don't really have a program in place that this fits into particularly well. In the staff report, there's an outline of a couple of things. One, does this type of proposal to help preserve a mobile home park fit within the strategic plan of the city council? Well, it probably can, under the right circumstances. It really probably depends on a number of things. The income levels of the property owners, the permanency of the preservation. But what we have is there 116 units, the vast majority fit within a lower than 125% area median income, which is a threshold that we use for our fair share program. So I would say, generally speaking, if it's within the strategic plan objectives. In terms of potential funding sources, certainly there's a number of them. The only ones I focused in on for the presentation here and the staff report was the three housing funds that we have. And two of them are transfer fees, voluntary transfer fees, ones through Three Springs, ones through Twin Buttes. I've outlined kind of the purpose and intent of those funding sources. Could they be used for this purpose? I suppose they probably could. I would suspect that probably isn't the, probably wouldn't be well received by the developers, development- developers, development community that are in those two, Three Springs and Twin Buttes. The third category was the fair share program funding. And as we've been talking for months now about units on the ground, as you know, the fair share ordinance is up for review this year, and we'll be taking a closer look at how we can be most effective right now, the way the program works, for all intents and purposes, as we see a few units get built through the fair share program. But by and large, what we see is the developer commitments to meet the ordinance requirements is they're paying an in lieu fee rather than building units. And what that number is intended to represent is the difference between a unit that would be affordable in the development to someone whose income qualified and the unit is price pointed correctly, and then the number of the fees. So in this case, we do see significant dollars coming in in lieu fee. We do have fund balance in the in lieu fee. And from the perspective of staff and review by the city attorney, we feel like the fair share program in lieu fees is probably the best fit for this type of request if there's interest in supporting it. We do believe that there's a path forward using these fees, the in lieu fees to support this if it is supported by council. There would be a necessity to do some modifications to the agreements we already have with Homes Fund. As you know, and as was outlined in the staff report, all the in lieu fees are currently dedicated entirely to Homes Fund and their mortgage assistance program. And we do not use and we cannot use those funds for any other purpose at this time. So how that program works is essentially Lisa's program finds income qualified buyers and finds units, and then they match up the two with essentially gap financing to make them affordable to them. The city's funds that are out of the fair share program support twenty-five thousand dollars towards each one of those mortgages. So we've been doing this for effectively, probably since twenty fifteen, sixteen, when the dollars started coming in. You know, the ordinance is as old as eight and nine, but really that was right when the economy shifted significantly and there was no activity. So the money started coming in in fifteen, sixteen. We are seeing it come in significantly, I would say, over the last couple of years to the point where it's pretty meaningful dollars. Lisa can talk about her program and what she's accomplished, certainly, but I would say it has been putting people in units. What I see here is an opportunity, since we dedicate those funds entirely to Homes Fund now, is treating this current request as essentially a one-time expanded use of those dollars if there's interest in doing so. And there's certainly some questions that will have to be asked and answered before we get to a final agreement if there's a decision to go there. But I think it relates to the income verification of the residents and then maybe the longevity of, you know, the permanency of the use of the funds. The way the proposal from Homes Fund came in was as envisioned as a loan, a ten-year loan with potentially interest rate or no interest rate on that, also a payback period with an option of either giving it back to the city or leaving it with Homes Fund. If we use fair share dollars, I guess what I would see as the most practical approach would be, this would just be using the half million dollars of the fee and loo money that Homes Fund would be receiving anyways over the course of time, but they wouldn't be putting it into individual mortgage assistance loans at twenty-five thousand dollars apiece. They would essentially be investing it for, it sounds like, ten years into the Animus View Mobile Home Park acquisition, at which time that money could come back to Homes Fund and go straight into their revolving loan fund to continue the work on mortgage assistance or whatever program is in place in ten years that has been agreed to by the city and Homes Fund. Included in your packet was the fair share ordinance, also the professional services agreement with Homes Fund that kind of outlines the current fair share program and how we utilize those funds. With the concept of using these funds for the acquisition of the assistance on the acquisition, obviously, there's going to be less mortgage assistance money available. My understanding is, and Lisa can certainly speak to this, is that the mortgage assistance program has slowed down a bit lately. The way I wrote up the staff recommendation, if there's interest in moving this direction, is that we leave some funds available within the existing fund balance that we've already transferred to Homes Fund so that they have some money available for short term, for a couple of mortgage assistances. We also will have money remaining in our fund balance that would allow for one additional at this time. The city does have additional fee and loo commitments that will be coming in over the course of the year, so our fund balance will replenish relatively quickly. And the way the agreement with Homes Fund is set up is that they do incremental asks as it's needed, so we don't transfer the dollars directly to Homes Fund minute they come into the city, they stay in the city coffers, there's an ask and a justification, and then we transfer those dollars. But in no time do those dollars come back to the city. Once they're transferred to Homes Fund, they stay in Homes Fund and they revolve. If a home sale is sold that's under the mortgage assistance program, there's a shared appreciation loan that is associated with the money that Homes Fund gathers as that gap financing. And that appreciation stays with Homes Fund, also goes back into the program for further mortgage assistance. There was a number of questions asked over the last few weeks, and we did our best to compile them and put answers to them. The vast majority of the answers were provided by Homes Fund, although there was one particular question that was answered by our finance department. Hopefully, we didn't miss anything in those, but certainly if there's questions we've missed, we're happy to answer those. You know, with that, I guess that kind of summarizes where things stand. I do believe there's a path forward on doing this. It will require some additional work on the part of staff and the city attorney, working with not only the council but also the Homes Fund board of directors to ensure that any agreements are meeting the minimum requirements of our fair share ordinance as well as the professional services agreement we have with Homes Fund. We're prepared to take those steps if council directs us to do so. With that, I can either answer questions that you can bring Lisa on to talk more specifically about the proposal and some of the nuances of it, because that's really in per court.
Thank you, Kevin. I would suggest that we go ahead and listen to Lisa before we ask questions. Does that work for everyone? Okay, thank you, Lisa. Hi.
Good evening. I'm going to share my screen and go over my presentation. Can you all see the screen?
Yes, thank you.
And city staff has asked me to be concise, so in order to avoid rambling, I'm going to be reading, so please excuse me for being a little bit stiff or if I stumble. So a little bit of background on this proposal. The Animus View manufactured home park residents were informed in late twenty twenty that the current owner of the park, a corporation named Strive, was selling the park to another corporation for fourteen million dollars. Under a recently passed Colorado law, House Bill twelve oh one, the residents were given an opportunity to purchase the park instead. The residents of Animus View quickly pulled together to form a co-op that is the purchaser and will be the owner of the park. This is a historic transaction. The Animus View residents are the first manufactured home park residents to buy their community and form a resident-owned community under House Bill twelve oh one. The price tag of fourteen million dollars for the park has required that multiple parties come together to provide funds for the resident co-op so that they can proceed with the purchase. Thistle Communities, a Boulder-based nonprofit, has provided technical assistance to the residents to help them to form the co-op and secure financing. The bulk of the financing is being provided by Rock USA Capital, an organization that solely provides funds to resident co-ops purchasing manufactured home parks. The Colorado Health Foundation is providing significant support and financing. Homes Fund is also providing a five hundred thousand dollar loan to the co-op. We are asking for an additional five hundred thousand dollars from the city of Durango. We are requesting that city funds for the co-op flow through Homes Fund for a combined loan that blends the interest rates and principal of the Homes Fund contribution with the city contribution. Homes Fund has a long history of processing and facilitating loans, and we are going to lend money to the project regardless of whether or not the city contributes funds. So combining the city funds with the Homes Fund funds creates efficiency, and we can also get a shared lien position if we work together. Funds from the city will reduce the first mortgage loan amount, and the combined Homes Fund and city loan will save the Animus View co-op approximately forty-five thousand dollars per year. This savings will translate into lower rents of about three hundred eighty-nine dollars per household per year. Three hundred eighty-nine dollars may not be a lot to many members of the council and many members of the audience, but for the low-income households in Animus View, three hundred eighty-nine dollars may mean a couple of months of groceries or a necessary car repair or payment of a medical bill. More than eighty percent of the Animus View residents are low-income households with incomes below eighty percent of area median income, and fifty-five households are very low-income with incomes below fifty percent area median income. A city contribution to the Animus View co-op will make housing more affordable for a hundred and sixteen households, most of which are low-income households. The average AMI in the community is approximately sixty-five percent. Both the other financing and the co-op bylaws are structured in a way to preserve ongoing affordability and stability for the residents. There are multiple requirements that ensure that the Animus, that the Animus View park remain an affordable resident-owned manufactured home community into the foreseeable future. I recognize that there are opportunity costs in using the requested funds for the Animus View purchase. Comparing this requested loan to other potential uses of funds, this request is more impactful in several ways. First, one hundred and sixteen low and moderate income households will be stabilized in our community versus approximately thirty by using five hundred thousand dollars for mortgage assistance, or five to ten households for development of affordable workforce housing. Second, this loan to Animus View co-op will serve very low-income households. There are twenty-five households that are under thirty percent AMI, and the average AMI for the community is sixty-five percent. For mortgage assistance, our average AMI is approximately seventy-five percent, and it is rare that a very low-income household with an income under thirty percent AMI is able to use our assistance because it is difficult for them to find an affordable home in our community and for them to qualify for a mortgage. It is to be determined what AMIs developed workforce housing will serve, but most of our conversations around the topic focused on households with incomes between one hundred and a hundred and twenty percent AMI. In putting the requested five hundred thousand dollars toward the Animus View purchase, you will be helping a greater number of lower-income households to have stable, affordable homeownership than you would with other potential projects. The requested funds can also be deployed in the next couple of weeks, whereas it would take years to deploy five hundred thousand dollars as either mortgage assistance or as developed property. It is anticipated that the purchase of the Animus View community by the co-op consisting of residents will be rent stabilization, the co-op is less likely to raise rents than a corporate owner, long-term affordable housing for low and moderate income households, prevention of displacement, and community building. The community building is something that will ensure a long-term success of the co-op, of the co-op. The residents are working together to ensure that all community members are cared for and that none are displaced. The co-op board has set a goal of providing the financial support needed so that one hundred percent of the residents can stay in their homes. Funds from the city will help to make Animus View more affordable, and it is a community with many very low-income residents, and every little bit of help toward affordability is important and appreciated. So thank you very much for your consideration of this request. I am happy to answer any questions, and there are also some people who are in the audience who I think might be able to help. So Mitchell, if you see Andy Cadlec in the audience, he is, he's with Thistle Communities. He may want to speak as well, but I'm happy to answer questions and punt to him if necessary.
Thank you very much, Lisa. I just wanted to remind the other public that this is not a public comment topic, is under administrative, so thank you very much for speaking early during, earlier during our public comment time. Does council have any questions? I saw Olivier's hand, yes.
Yeah, I want to jump right in. I appreciate the presentation, and I am very pleased with the fact that the residents will be buying the Animus View Mobile Home Park and then have more control over cost increases in their own homes, and these are lower-cost types of housing. So I've done my financial review. I want to make sure that we all know exactly what the costs and risks are, and this is especially important for the people living there, typically lower income. There are maybe people that are on the lower income scale or that are typically the ones losing out in case of economic or other unexpected changes. So I want to make sure we're well-informed and somewhat protected from certain risks. Now, the study implies, and I'll end up with a question for you, Lisa. This study implies there's a cost saving of three hundred and eighty-nine dollars per year per lot or per residency. And so I ran the same numbers, and this number is misleading. So I compared your number with the scenario of a thirty-year mortgage for the full amount, and then I compared it with your scenario here where the five hundred thousand interest fee loan comes into play, and you have a one million dollar payment refinanced that's due in ten years. So the first ten years, I agree with you, there is an annual saving of two hundred, three hundred eighty-nine dollars, which does not include the origination fee, so it's actually less, but it's not, it's not that far off. But after ten years, the residents, the owners of the co-op, will have to pay back one million dollars, probably through a refinance, which by itself is a huge risk in case of interest rate changes or changes in asset valuation. Now, assuming that the interest rate stays four point four, which might be optimistic if you look at history, the next twenty years, each resident will actually pay a hundred and thirty-one dollars more, more, yeah, no savings, more. And that's because there is a one million dollar balloon payment after ten years, which was interest-free, so now they have to pay that back. Or if you compare it on average for the whole thirty years, the actual annual savings per residency is thirty-nine dollars per year if you compare a fixed-rate thirty-year mortgage to a ten-year balloon payment, interest fee for five hundred thousand as you proposed it. And that thirty-nine dollar savings on average per year, the thirty years, does not include refinance costs, involvement of staff, organizations, appraisals, et cetera, et cetera, that are applicable after ten years. So that minor cost saving, really, is that really worth the risk with the balloon payment, potential interest rate changes, costs and difficulties with refinance after ten years, and all that cost for staff and organization? So I personally think that the purchase by residents is a great opportunity so that they have control over their future and actually gain ownership and equity. But we need to make sure that the information is complete and clear and to protect affordable housing and lower-income households with a longer term in mind. So the actual savings is thirty-nine dollars a year on average for the thirty years, which is that worth the risk? And I, yeah, I think, maybe you can explain or give me your thoughts about those cost savings, the way I presented it, and as well as the music and risk with Homes Fund, because it's not just the city of Durango's money. I also think it would be nice for you to explain why you believe that the Homes Fund should spend five hundred thousand dollars on a temporary loan, which the residents later have a risk, they will have, they might have the risk of having to pay that back with difficulty to refinance if their appraisal goes wrong. So I think there's a lot of risk for the residents. So I'll let you talk.
Sure, sure. So there's going to be a balloon payment on the first mortgage, no matter what. We are not imposing a balloon payment onto, onto the, onto the residents. The only possible way of financing this community by the residents, by a newly formed co-op that was formed less than two months ago, is to go through this organization called Rock USA Capital. In ten years, it is presumed that they will have many more options, that they will be able to go through a bank to, to get, to get a refinance. That's what's happened with all of the other resident-owned communities that have been purchased. That's what's happened with all of the other resident owned communities that have been put, have been put into place. But as for right now, they need to take the only terms that they could possibly be offered. And, and with those, and with these, these terms, which by the way are not predatory, 4.4% with a 30-year, year amortization and a 10-year balloon, that's just not predatory for a commercial loan. You know, just kind of putting, putting that out there. I understand that the balloon is, it's concerning and I completely agree that it's concerning and it, and it's a risk that the, that the residents are taking on. I think that the residents know full well that they are taking on this risk. They don't know what interest rates are going to be in the future. No one, none of us can know what the interest rates are going to be in the future. But they have, they have had, they've had great advice from Thistle Communities. We've got, we've got Andy here who has gone through this with other, with other communities. And, and they're smart people, you know? They, they may be low income, but that doesn't mean that they're not sophisticated. They understand what they're getting themselves into. And it wasn't an easy decision. Frankly, I think that, that there are some really difficult aspects about this and the balloon payment is one of those aspects. The high price tag frankly is one of, is one of those aspects. You know, I, I think that, that, you know, former councilwoman Marbury brought up an interesting point in, in public comments earlier of, of just kind of the, the balance between, you know, do we want this to go toward mortgage assistance or do we want, or do we want this money to go toward, toward this, this proposed, this proposed project? And, you know, I think that there's, that there's a lot, that, that how it was posed is it can be either or. And I think that, and I think that there can be some and here. You know, we, we are not going to stop doing our mortgage assistance program, program because, because of this. We can, we, we can do both, given the, given the, the upcoming, the upcoming money that, and the fee in lieu that Kevin, that Kevin mentioned, that Kevin mentioned earlier. So, gosh, I, it was going to be linked. I swear it was going to be linked. But, but I, I.
Why don't we see if there are any other questions by councillors? Are there, do other councillors have questions?
Jessica? Yes, I have, I have a couple of questions. I'll jump in. Okay. So, can you, what is the rent now for them? You said it's going to go up regardless, it's going up. It's either going to be what, 862 or 829 depending if the city does this. How much is it going up already?
So, it's, it's going up from, you know, I have, I have that information. It's approximately 730 a month up to this, up to about 830, 830 a month. And the residents are aware of that as well. They, they are taking kind of a calculated risk that, that this initial increase in lot rents will be lower than what it would be with a corporate, with a corporate owner. And, and I, and I think that, that in the short term, whether or not they're right is, is to be determined. But in the long term, they almost certainly are correct. That they, that these resident owned communities have been shown to create long-term affordability and they, and they have been shown to, you know, hold rents at a much more affordable level than, than the corporate owned, than, than the, than the corporate owned communities.
Jessica, do you have other questions?
Yes, I have, I have a few questions if that's okay. And I should have started with.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm just trying to not to go for an hour and a half.
I know, I, I'll be, I'll be quick. I mean, I should have started.
It's fine, it's fine.
Okay, I should have started with, I love the fact that they're trying to keep this mobile home park. I am a full supporter of this community staying here and affordable housing. There's just some concerns about, you said you'll be able to continue to do the mortgage assistance that you currently do. It shows in the spreadsheet that we got, we have $578,000 in available share funds and $500,000 would go to you. So, it's a huge depletion. It's the majority of our fair share funds, yes?
So, yes, but there, there are a couple of things. Kind of first, first off, we do have a revolving loan fund. And so, and so what we are getting paid back, what has been deployed so far is going to get paid back and then we can, we can re, redeploy that. And I, I want, I want to, I want to maintain both and kind of, let me, let me just tie these things together. Like why I started talking about that in response to Olivier's question is that, you know, one of, one of my kind of initial thoughts on this that was, that was discussed a bit with, with staff is, you know, could the city's funds be turned into a grant at the end of the, at the end of the 10-year period? And, you know, while that, that, while that may be a bit harder for our mortgage assistance program because it would mean that we wouldn't be getting that $500,000 back from the mortgage assistance program. I think that, that is something, well, just to, just to consider because that would, that would make it so that, that in the, in the 10 years, you know, half of, half of the loan would be forgiven and that would create more affordability.
Also, I just wanted to say that I, I think it's set in there that there would still be $50,000 left for two more mortgage assistance programs and we'll be getting more fee in loews coming in as the year goes by. So, just FYI.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, that we will be able to fulfill the need and the, for, for our mortgage assistance program with, with the $50,000 that we will, that we will retain plus the amount that is to be coming in, in the pipeline.
Another concern is that some of these houses, we don't, well, we don't know the income level necessarily and they don't fall under that 80%. Can each, I know you, I, well, from research, I, I don't think you guys do assistance to mobile homeowners right now. Is that correct? Homes Fund?
So-ish, we do have a specific program for financing manufactured and mobile homes that are, where we're providing first mortgages. We do not, our mortgage assistance program, which is kind of more like a down payment assistance program, we do not currently provide that on, on manufactured homes that are difficult to finance. But we do have a first mortgage program for difficult to finance manufactured homes.
So, individual owners of this property couldn't come to you and apply with their financials and their, and their need and then you could help the homeowners that actually need it?
So, they're not buying the units, they're actually buying?
Buying the land, yes.
Right, so, so this particular transaction is for the co-op to purchase the land. And that's obviously what we're, what we're talking about right now. So, if a, we would not refinance an existing owner's, you know, refinance their, their existing already owned unit. But if someone, if a qualified person sought to purchase a unit in this particular part, then we, we do have some funds that could provide assistance. Those are not city provided funds. Those are funds through a different program and other funding sources.
Okay, and that's it for now.
Thank you. Other councillors who haven't spoken, do you have questions? Yes, Mayor Proten, Nozworthy.
Yes, first of all, thank you, Lisa. Thank you for putting a lot of thought into this. And I'm, I'm, I'm remembering when we first met, when I was a candidate and we were talking about attainable and affordable housing and you said manufactured homes is going to have to be part of this equation. And so, now we're coming around. My first question for you is, given Homes First, or Homes Fund, excuse me, I always go there. Housing First, but, but it's Homes Fund. Given, given the past history, how long would it take you to impact 116 families with the kind of resources that you're going to be providing?
You know, I could tell you that in the, since we have been deploying the, it, it would take at least 10 years to deploy this money in the, in the city limits.
So, it would take 10 years to basically?
And I, I'm going to take that back. I think it would be a little bit less than that. I mean, I think, I think that going $100,000 per, per year, it should, shouldn't be a problem. So, let's say five years.
Okay, and I was looking more like seven based on your, your past numbers. But so, basically you're going to be able to have an impact and difference on these people's lives and they're going to recognize the risks they're taking. You know, as you said, they're going into it. And the 389 is, to Olivier's comments, it's actually, you know, calculated over present value. Present value played out over a long term would be a much reduced amount. But right now, $389 is significant for some people in this unit. So, I did want to look at that and I also wanted to know, right now, how many people are actually pounding on your door to get mortgage assistance outside of this mobile home facility?
So, so our, our pipeline, the City of Durango has actually, it's been really difficult right now for people to buy homes within the city limits of Durango because it's, because there's just such a big gap that the market, as I'm sure you all are, are at least somewhat aware, prices have just been skyrocketing and people are bidding over the asking price and, and people who need any sort of financing are getting outbid. And so, so it's a really difficult environment right now for people to purchase homes. You know, we're doing, we're doing the best, we're doing the best we can to deploy the resources that we, that we have. And I very much think that, you know, we should continue to be thinking of creative ways to get people into more traditional affordable homeownership along with, you know, kind of, kind of left field projects, projects like this. We have absolutely no intention of, of abandoning our, our standard products and, and really, and really what we're doing. But it's a really tough environment right now, to be, to be completely honest with you.
I, I, this is no, this is no criticism of the, the work. It's each, their acknowledgement of what we're facing right now. And I see it as seizing an opportunity to be responsive. So, I, I do have one more question, one question for Kevin and then I'll be finished with my questions. Kevin, two, oh, actually it's two questions. These funds have not yet transferred to Homes Fund, correct?
Homes Fund has a balance, a fund balance that has been transferred.
It already has, okay.
The city holds a fund balance that has not been transferred. Those numbers are in the staff report, yeah.
Right, and you, did you at all consider the possibility of making, and not that I'm suggesting this, I'm just asking a question, did you consider the possibility of a grant toward this effort as a, as a way of demonstrating a real ability to assist with homeownership, attainable homeownership?
Well, I would tell you that my thought process was it would become a grant to Homes Fund, which is, wouldn't be repaid the city because that's how the program works right now. I did not put any thought into whether the dollars the city was committing to this would just stay with the, the mobile home community.
Okay, thank you. And, and finally, as I have read this and I want to make certain that the public understands that we're not committing any of the funds or the in lieu fees or the transfer fees, excuse me, coming from Twin Buttes or Three Springs. All of that money will be available for future development along with, where is the Rocket Point money? Has that all been received or is that still coming in?
There is not Rocket Point dollars.
Oh, not Rocket Point, I'm, forgive me, yeah, the rental, sorry. So, the, the, the Twin Buttes and the Three Springs, that will be available, correct?
Those transfer fee dollars, I, as staff, we would not recommend utilizing those. We'd use the dollars that already go to Homes Fund through the fair share agreement.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Yusup, did you have questions?
Thank you, I'm just doing math simultaneously. So, I was asked, I was wanting to ask a similar question that councillor Nozworthy was asking, which is, you know, are we willing to forgive this $500,000 at the end of year 10? I think that's the question because there's really no way to look at this as anything. I mean, this is clearly an un, pretty, in a fourth position, unsecured and, and it's so risky. I think that's the question we have to ask ourselves more than anything is are we willing to, to forgive this in some way? And who, who would that fund go to? Would it be like you're saying councillor Nozworthy, a grant to the Homes Fund? Would it go back to the Homes Fund? Would it stay with the, with the residents? And when I was trying to just play with the numbers, I was just doing simple math of trying to figure out the savings per resident. And we're saying $389 a year on average for the 116 residents. 389 times 10, 3,890 times 116, or 116 members is approximately $451,000, I believe. So, I'm trying to figure out also where that difference is between the 500 and the 451 at the end of year 10. And, you know, if you're, if you're going to give money away, you want it to be dollar for dollar at a minimum, at least if you can. So, I'm trying to, I'm just, there's a whole bunch of different ways of looking at this mathematically. But I think that's the question in my mind is are we willing to forgive this $500,000 in one way, shape or form at the end of 10 years? And it may be worthwhile, I would suggest, to address our very difficult living situation. We do not, I would agree that we do not want to lose these homes. We want to keep these homes in our community. I agree also with councillor Bosmans that having them owned by the residents is the best way to do it. And so, I, I, I hear that it's going to happen either way. Without us or not, we will just be able to provide value or added savings. And so, I'm trying to figure out what added savings we really can provide and what it looks like per resident. Because I see, I see it as an opportunity to be creative, like you're trying to be, Lisa, and I appreciate that. So, I guess that's some of the stuff that I'm thinking. And in thinking that, I know we have a deadline that we're trying to comply with, but I do wonder if we should be taking some time to speak with some of the banking experts we have in our community. You know, Kent Curtis at First Southwest Bank, he does, you know, he, he has, he's, he's pretty familiar with this type of lending and opportunity, if you may have already spoken with him, Lisa, I'm not sure. But he might be able to also ask some questions if we had a little bit more time, that I would be kind of interested in hearing that perspective as well.
So, Kent is, is a great friend of Homes Fund and a great asset to our community. I actually have not asked him specifically. Sean Candelaria with Four, with Four Corners Community Bank is actually on our board and loan committee. And he has underwritten many loans to, to owners of manufactured home parks. And, you know, I, he, he voted, he voted in favor of this and, and I think that he more acutely knows, he, he knows the risks of, of this transaction more than, more than other people. And like you pointed out councillor Yusup, this is not, this is a fourth, fourth lien position loan. It is not, it is not worth without risk. I think we need to be thinking of it as being a very mission oriented transaction. And, and Homes Fund is a, we are a nonprofit organization, we are a lender as well, but we, but we can't think of these things like a bank does. We, we are thinking of community building and, and preserving these 116 homes. You know, and, and just making, making things just a little bit easier for, for folks. It's, it's, it's.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and, and I think, but just, just for, just for timing sake though, this, these loans are going to close around mid-June. And between now and, is it, I, I think it's June 15th, maybe the 20th, something, something along those, those lines. Getting all the documents put together, getting all of our agreements put together. Like, like while I would love to have you have more input from, from bankers, I, I don't honestly think that we have time. And I think that, I think that bankers would say, we would, we wouldn't do that for a brand new form and for a newly formed co-op, kind of like I was saying earlier. Like this is, Rock USA is the only organization that would. But after they have a track record, hopefully they'll be able to refinance.
Right, and when I was suggesting, I think with. Right. And when I was suggesting, I think what they would help us do, I, I think that we all know this is obviously very untraditional. And that's, that's what the, that's why Rock USA and Thistle, that's what these organizations do. They're not traditional. And so I'm not, I was just suggesting that when this is kind of thrown at us and we're, we are still trying to be fiduciarily responsible with taxpayer funds, we do need to understand, I feel like I need to understand all the risks associated and/or be willing to just say that we are going to make, this is a worthwhile mission project, like you're saying, and it's, it's, it's important enough to do for our community, to make a difference and to help. And we're willing to do this pretty much unsecured, you know, position because of the value that it provides for these homeowners. And so I think that that's where I'm going in my head, is I agree with you on the mission and the value 100%. I just really want to understand it. And so that's what I was trying to do today. And it's, you know, but, but if I can look at it, as we were saying, as a grant, then that comes out of it at the end. I think that that's a different scenario. And I think that's where you're getting. If we look at it that way, then we, we don't, you know, it alleviates the concern to the, to, to answer all the difficult questions because they probably couldn't be answered, really. So I think that's kind of where I think we have to decide as a council.
Thank you, Melissa. So to all your points, I think this is a wonderful project. 116 different residences and that we have this capability. I think it's wonderful. But the things we've been talking about, so there's a balloon payment. It's not just a million dollars. It's a 12 million dollar plus balloon payment in 10 years. That's a huge challenge for, I think, almost anyone to refinance. However, my biggest question is, if the thing goes into foreclosure or or it's sold to someone else, is there anything that the city can do to ensure that that property remains as workforce or attainable housing? Or if it were developed, that it would have to provide workforce or attainable housing? Because if it does, if we can, it doesn't matter if this, if they can't refinance for the city, just for these dollars, not for the individuals and their lives, but for the city dollars. It doesn't matter because the 500,000 that we're putting into it will continue to live on in attainable and workforce housing. So that's my question to staff. And maybe, Lisa, you might have some input there. Is there any way that we can ensure that we don't lose this attainable, affordable housing, no matter what happens?
And I, I might need to pull City Attorney Nelson into the conversation. Staff's not familiar with the details of the first position financing. Certainly, there may be an ability to condition or deed restrict the, the property in a manner that would ensure some type of affordability. I'm not sure what that looks like today, Mayor Baxter. I guess that's a question that I hadn't really pondered prior to asking the question. But it would seem to me that you could condition the financing on certain things. While we may not receive the $500,000 back, I think what you're saying is there a way to ensure that we would have some level of affordability on the property if, if it foreclosed or sold. And that way, then our investment has not gone to waste.
Right. And is there some, is there an emergency code zoning thing that we could do before the sales to actually ensure that too? I mean, let's look at all the ways that we could possibly ensure that we get to keep this as the kind of housing that we want it to be. And for me personally, you know, there, there's another thing that bothers me. We don't have a policy about this, but we'll get there eventually. But for me personally, if we can ensure this, I, I, I don't, it doesn't matter if we, if, if it goes away. And like I said, I'm not talking about the individual's lives, but I'm willing to do this if, for certain. I mean, there's no question if we can, if we can create this certainty for that property.
So can I, can I just say that, that while the financing is in, is in place, there are, there are affordability restrictions that are, that are outlined in, in the original memo that I sent and also, and also in on a page of the, of the PowerPoint that ensure that this, that this remains affordable housing and that it, and that it remains a manufactured home community as long as the financing is in, is in place. If there's, if there's a foreclosure, there's going to be, there's going to be all sorts of problems. And typically deed restrictions drop off in the case of, in the case of a foreclosure. And I think, and I think that, that that for, for financing to go through, it's usually the financiers who require that the deed restrictions drop, drop off. I, I seriously doubt that Rock USA would be okay with the city putting a deed restriction on in case of foreclosure. They need, they need to have, they need to have all sorts of flexibility. And, you know, knock on wood, let's hope that this community doesn't go through foreclosure. They actually have, there's a a high price tag. There's actually a lot of wiggle room like built into this.
I'm not talking deed restrictions. I'm talking a different mechanism to ensure that the property stays with the intention that we want it to. So I, Dirk, do you have any input into this?
Well, no, I agree with what Lisa says about deed restrictions. But, you know, the zoning question, frankly, I'm not sure what it's zoned now. So I think we could engage in that kind of discussion, but is it possible to change the zoning in a way that creates the inability to develop it? I suppose that there is, but again, a zoning change may be one of those things that a lender would also have to consent to. That would need to happen before the, the, the deed of trust is put in place because any changes after that very well may be something that could be foreclosed out. We would just need to conduct some, you know, research and look into that idea. Again, as Lisa said, lenders are gonna want to have flexibility in terms of what they do with the property conveyed to third parties to recover their investment. So I think it would be difficult to do. I'll be honest with you. I think it'd be tricky to do.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't imply that it wouldn't be developable. Actually.
Maybe that's the wrong word. I mean, I, I think the fear here was that some developer would come in, you know, remove the mobile homes and put up townhouses or something else. There's a fair number of safeguards built into Colorado law, unlike some other states in terms of making it harder for someone to buy a property and, you know, change the use away from a mobile home use. And, and we're seeing that as what's driving their ability to do this in the first place. So I do think that changing the use would be somewhat difficult, not impossible. So undevelopable was the wrong word, but, but changing the use is probably the better way to phrase that.
Well, actually, I didn't mean that either because maybe it's not a mobile home park. Maybe it's apartments or maybe it's condominiums. I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying that the use, that the function of it remains the same in at least a reasonable way.
And Mayor Baxter, this is Andy Catholic from Thistle Rock. If I don't, if you will permit me to just speak a little bit about that topic.
Please.
In the formation of the cooperative, the, the cooperative legal structure that's purchasing the park, as well as the bylaws that govern the operation of this community, there's pretty strong language that explicitly states that the community is perpetually meant to be a manufactured housing community. The bylaws give the right to Rock USA as a, a partner that can prevent the sale of the community to any other partner. And so residents are well understood that the purpose of this financing and purchase is perpetual ownership and management of a manufactured housing park. In the 30 years of our program across the country, 270 cooperatives have been formed. And every single co-op is still in existence. Not a single one has gone into default, which is a pretty darn good, you know, track record for, for any sort of organization. But if, you know, God forbid, there would be a situation where foreclosure or a bankruptcy would occur, you know, language in those bylaws and articles of incorporation of the cooperative do explicitly state that the use of the community must be maintained as is and be sold to a, a nonprofit or government, government organization that would maintain the use of that community as a manufactured housing park.
So even if Rock USA takes over the land, they wouldn't be able to do anything with that land except what's already there?
Correct.
Okay, that's interesting. I, I mean, if, if that's actually the case, then you're doing exactly, they've already done exactly what I was asking about. That's awesome. Okay. Thank you very much.
And, you know, Mayor Baxter, if I could comment on a few of the other previous comments from council members, I'd just like to, you know, provide some more data on historical background of, of other manufactured housing communities that turned, turned into rocks. Typically, we've recently done a 10-year study of, of rent market versus cooperative rent. And on average, market rent in manufactured housing communities across the country will increase at 5% or more versus in resident owned communities. The annual increase is below 1%. The only reason to increase that rent is for, you know, those, those cost increases like taxes, insurance and utilities. You know, they're maintaining a very stable mortgage and controlling those expenses as a community that lives there. So there is no need to raise the rent unless absolutely essential. And, you know, in relation to local support, I want to touch on a few recent situations. Just tonight, the City Council of Fort Collins approved a similar, a similar resolution setting aside $200,000 in city funds to supporting another community in the city of Fort Collins that is pursuing purchase. In 2018, the city of Longmont also set aside $300 to help, help the acquisition of LMP Co-op, one of our resident owned communities in the state of Colorado. The state of Colorado has also been a partner multiple times and committing over 1.2 million dollars to help with acquisition and infrastructure development and support of communities across the state. And so I'd just like to state that, you know, it's pretty clear that local government is seeing this as, as a model that is successful and does prove that it can help really meet local affordability needs and local affordability goals of government and communities, as well as preserve housing perpetually at a much lower cost than any other development model that you would have. I think Lisa presented those costs per unit. And so it's pretty amazing to be able to, you know, preserve 116 units in one bell swoop. So.
Thank you. And I, I did want to mention that at $500,000, dividing that by 116 units, that's $4,310 total. And if indeed in perpetuity, I mean, this is, unless, I guess the, the ownership, the, the community ownership could change their bylaws? Or is, is this in perpetu, I mean, like, is this in perpetuity? There's no way to ever change it from a mobile home park?
The community has the right to change certain bylaws, but as I mentioned, there is, Rock USA Capital is, has a specific membership stake in the community that gives them the right to, you know, make sure they see any changes that are done. And so that if any changes occur that would affect the preservation and long-term affordability, if the community would intend to make a change to the bylaws that would, would give them the opportunity to sell, they would have the right as that member in this organization to prevent that change.
So even after the, even if after it was refinanced, Rock still has a membership in that organization?
Yeah, Rock USA would have a membership in that organization. There are two separate organizations involved. The Rock USA Network and Rock USA Capital. They're kind of, you know, partner or sister organizations. And so the financing is directly with Rock USA Capital. But there is a separate partnership with the Rock USA Network that communities are always required to be a part of. And that's stated in their bylaws.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions? Counselor Bosman's?
I, I'm gonna go back to the basics here. I, everybody agrees that it's a great idea for residents to purchase this mobile home park. I, I have not heard anybody disagree. And again, I can show you and explain all the calculations I've done, but the actual savings is $39 per year per lot. It is not 389. It never will be because it has some fees missing. But on average, over 30 years, $39 a year. We're not talking about if it's a good idea. It's, we're not talking about grant. That was, that is a new one for me. We're talking about helping finance this purchase that is not necessary to continue with the purchase, but just basically supporting that purchase with the $500,000 interest free loan. That is the question. I, there is not a single hair on my head that says that makes sense to help, to add the additional cost, which nobody talks about for savings of $39 a year on average. Because no matter, unless we're talking about, do you want to waive the, the loan? Will you just give them half a million dollars? That's one other discussion. Will you give them a grant? And that's a different discussion. And as we know about this point, is it?
Counselor Bosman?
Finance for $39 a year.
Could I point something out though? It's not $31 this coming year. It's, it's, let me finish. It's $389 this year. That, that, it's over $300 this year. That could make a significant difference to individuals in that community. It's over $300 for at least the first 10 years. That is what makes the difference. It isn't the $39 a year over 30 years. Maybe those people won't be there 30 years from now. That's not what they're affected by. They're affected by now. And that's what we have to look at in this because how many people will lose their homes in the next 10 years? Because we think it's $39 a year and it's three, over $300 a year. So that for me is the challenge here.
Can I give you a response to that?
Sure.
If you feel that that is the approach we should take, then we should probably also consider every low income person in Durango to give them an equal amount as a grant. Because when you apply to one, and, and it's not 389, it's 39. And if you want to use the first 10 years, okay, it is 380. Then you have to apply that same grant or gift to everybody that's low income, unless you have a reason why you think these people deserve it more than the person that lives next door that is also low income and struggling.
I hear what you're saying. Counselor Knowsworthy, you have a?
May I jump in? First of all, we are addressing this group that meets for pretty much the, the AMI. And we're addressing them because we have an opportunity right now. And we're addressing them specifically on housing. We're not addressing their income to help them buy groceries or anything else. We are addressing housing. And I'd like to also recognize that I give a huge kudos to Lisa for being willing to think differently from what they've always done. I really, I'd like to do that. And to the Rock for having this mission. And so for me, I'm willing to make a motion unless there's more discussion.
You, you know, you can make a motion at any point in time. That's the way.
Okay. Then I move that we direct the city manager to negotiate and finalize the terms of an Animus View Mobile Home Park Funding Assistant Agreement with Homes Fund for consideration and possible action at an upcoming city council meeting.
Is there a second?
I can, I think we're making no decisions right now. We're looking at.
There's a motion on the floor. I'm, I'm in a second. Do we have further discussion?
We're making no decision right now. We're, the motion calls for it in future, if I may recall, for consideration and possible action at an upcoming city council meeting. So that allows times for questions to be asked. If I'm following the schedule correctly, Jose, you would have this put together in a package for the June first meeting. Is that correct?
Assuming we could get to an agreement and all the parties would pass, that would be the, I believe, the next available meeting.
I would like to discuss this. I, I just don't understand it why we're, we're moving this forward. I, I think the, the people that buy this place making a good decision for their own building of wealth and security in rent. But I think adding, adding city funds to that is not correct. I, I would kill this whole option if I could. And I would vote against even any study being done on this topic because I think it's not in the benefit of those residents in the mobile home park, nor for the city and especially low income people. And I also do acknowledge Lisa and Andy. And anybody who wants to know more, reach out to me.
Well, and I would.
That was my last point, thank you.
Thank you.
You're on the air.
I, going off of what Counselor Bosmans is suggesting, I think it is the responsible thing to do to look into this further, and that's why if we have until June, the first of June to bring it back in any case, it would be the only way that I would, you know, agree with that, is I would want staff to look into this further with some, you know, directly with some of the bankers in our community and/or, I'd like to get some questions answered. I'd like to get Olivier's questions answered. I'd like to understand fully, you know, the difference in prices that Olivier is coming up with, with what staff is, you know, and what Lisa and Andy are bringing to us. And I just want to, I think we, I just would like to get more clarification and really understand, understand exactly what we're doing here, and if ultimately it becomes, you know, a type of grant formation, I want to understand that, too. I'm not saying I'm completely opposed to it, I want to understand it. And that's what my request is, is that we look into this further, we get all the information we're trying to seek. This is a big, this is tax, these are, these are funds that we've carefully saved, and I think we need to be very careful how we expend them. And so I'm not saying I don't want to continue pursuing this as an option. I do want to, but I'd just like to have more time to do the due diligence, and I would like to look further with either Sean Candelaria, great respect for his bank, and/or Kent Curtis, because he does the CDFI, he is a CDFI bank, which, and that's why I was turning to him originally. So I'd like to be able to reach out to some of those folks for a little bit more due diligence.
That's good. Thoughts?
Yeah, I am, I guess I'm concerned. I'm concerned giving $500,000, like Melissa said, that we've been saving to a private organization. It's not Housing Solutions, it's not VOA, it's not Mercy. And like your mayor, your comment, what if it does foreclose? What happens to that land? How do we know it'll stay what it says it is? And what Mr. Bosman said about giving, I mean, and how do we know that all these people would qualify and are, were getting some of this money that own these units that would qualify to begin with? And so I'm just, I am concerned, I'm concerned that it's not, I mean, it's a good project, I want it to stay that way, it clearly is going to, if they're moving forward with the funding and we're not going to make it a decision until June, it's going through. So there's just a lot of questions that we don't have answered. I'm not a banker, so.
Thank you. So I, too, have reservations. I also see a possible opportunity here, and so I see no reason not to get the questions answered that we all have, so that we're either comfortable with the decision one way or the other, or we don't address it again. I just don't see any reason not to learn more about it. And I do actually think in the documentation that they have identified that the 80% of the residents are below, I don't even remember what it is, it was like 85% AMI. So we do know that about the residents. So I don't have any problem getting more information and answering those questions, and it doesn't mean that I think this is the right spend for $500,000, but I might be convinced that we could.
Can I say something about timing?
Yes.
This, the loans are going to close in mid-June, and commercial loans take a while to come together. I really don't know that there is time after, if a decision isn't made tonight. And I'm not trying, I'm not trying to put, you know, undue pressure on you. I know, I know that, you know, I had, I had weeks when I was writing my credit memo to get my, to get my head wrapped around, around it, and you guys, you know, have, have tonight. And I really appreciate your time and consideration and, and all of the time and consideration that you're putting into this. But I, but I do think that the community and the financing and all of the partners kind of need an answer. And I, and I'm getting the feeling that the answer is going to be no if I push it, and I feel really bad about that, but I, I do think that, just timing-wise, we need an answer tonight. I, you know, I'll, I'll just put that out there, you guys can make whatever decision you want as far as, as far as your timing for making a decision, but I think it's going to be hard.
Thank you.
To add you at the last minute.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to repeat what I believe the motion is, and then I would like to call a vote. Direct the city manager to negotiate and finalize terms of an Animus View Mobile Home Park Funding Assistant Agreement with Homes Fund for consideration and possible action at an upcoming city council meeting. Is that, was that your motion, Mayor Protim Nowsworthy?
It is, and I want clarification of what we mean by consideration and possible action. So it is not a vote tonight to do this, Lisa. We were not asked to consider and make a vote tonight to do this. We were asked to bring it forward, if I understand it.
If your motion does not pass, it's done.
So, so Lisa, I just want to say that right now, what you have is a motion on the floor which allows time for some questions to be addressed and further information gathering and bringing it back at the next city council, which would be June 1. If you push it, you just recognized, you can, you can basically, might receive a no.
I do, I do want to. I need to correct what I said, I'm sorry, that if this motion doesn't pass, that ends this motion, but it doesn't mean another motion couldn't be made, just, I didn't want to. Okay. Counselor Yussa?
Question, clarifying, just a thought I wanted to ask Lisa. To keep the closing on track, is there a possibility that the Homes Fund could do the million-dollar loan and we could reimburse you $500,000 if it was so approved by the city at a later date?
I mean, I'd have to ask my board, but yes, I, I think that, I think that they would, I, I don't want to entirely speak for them, like, that's, you guys all understand how that is, but, but, but we do have the money that we could, we could close.
That was actually going to be one of my questions that I forgot to ask. Where is your money coming from?
We have, for the Homes Fund loan?
For the Homes Fund share of this.
Right, right. So we get a variety of sources of capital. One of those sources is the CDFI fund, which is a part of, it's federal money, basically. And we get grants of that money that after we, after it revolves, after we deploy it and it comes back to us, it becomes unrestricted. And so we have some unrestricted CDFI fund money that we would be putting into this, and we have a couple of other, other sources of unrestricted funds that are not restricted to mortgage assistance capital.
So your question, Counselor Yussa, was interesting.
Right. I mean, if the issue is staying on track with closing, then that gives you an option to stay on track with closing, and then we can reconsider, and we can consider this in more detail and understand the implications to city, to the city, and whether we're able to do this mission-oriented loan, semi-secured loan, unsecured loan, and/or grant, however we get there. But we need, we need, we need more time for consideration, I think, is what I think I'm suggesting. And, but we, but I understand your time constraints, it does take time for these loans to go through, so if you guys could keep going and keep it on track, then we can continue to consider this. And I will just say, as one counselor, I'm very happy to do more due diligence. I'd like to understand this more. I'd like to really, really, you know, I just need more time. But I think with more time, then, then that'll help clarify a lot of things for, for some of us on the, on the fence here.
Great. So I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote, then. Ms. Phillips, please.
Mayor Protim.
You're on mute.
I need the, I need the motion repeated one time.
That's okay. So direct the city manager to negotiate and finalize terms of an Animus View Mobile Home Park Funding Assistance Agreement with Homes Fund for consideration and possible action at an upcoming city council meeting. Okay, Ms. Phillips?
Mayor Protim Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman? Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you all.
May I ask a question of the city manager, please? Jose, first of all, thank you, and we're moving things on to your agenda relatively quickly. And to Melissa's point, I do think it's important for us to understand it, and I also think it would be really helpful to understand the implications of a grant, which is not to a private corporation, but it's a grant to Homes Fund for its mission, which is similar to grants we make to Mana or to other organizations. So as you're thinking about that, could you put that into your, into your consideration as well? And I'm only one counselor asking you to think about that, so I recognize that I don't represent all of council.
Well, it's one of the options that might be brought forward. Okay, let's move on then to 12.2, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Resolution Amending the City Council Operational Processes and Policies.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. This was follow-up from the study session item that we had a couple of weeks ago in talking about the policy process that is established. There was direction given to make two changes to that policy process, one being that a majority vote of a council for a letter of support represents the majority of the council that supported them. And then also a second one was talking about legislative action. It was brought up that if we were to bring a letter of support or opposition, that we would provide the opportunity for both sides to have a point, have an ability to present their side at whatever agenda item that was placed. So those were the two changes that were recommended or given direction, excuse me, from the council at study session, and I've placed those there to formalize that process, to include those two modifications.
Thank you. Do any counselors have any questions or comments on the process or policies? I just have one. Under non-policy-related actions, the action which is the proclamation taken by the mayor requires to be followed the policy and conveys the support of the mayor. And that may very well be true in the execution of the situation, but my concern is that the perception, you know, we were talking about actual versus perceived the other day, the perception will be that that proclamation is supported by council and represents the city, even if it's just the mayor. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that issue, and not as me as a mayor, just in general, but being the mayor really brought this home to me. How do you all feel about that?
Okay. Well, I'll just say, I know that I was always curious how these proclamations came about, and only in one case did I actually say, you know, I can't quite support that, you know, one specific example of a proclamation. But I recognize that the mayor had that, had that say in determining whether or not, you know, because it was signed by the mayor and only representing the mayor. So I see your point. Are you suggesting that it need to become a council-wide decision?
I wasn't really making a suggestion, I was just wondering if it bothered anyone, but Jose and I did have a conversation today about a new process such that proclamations would come to a committee of staff to vet them for things that might be controversial for council or, you know, whatever, so that the mayor could make a decision about that and ask for either changes or what have you, and get the input from council like I did today, when, or yesterday and today about one of our proclamations. So if you're all okay with that, I don't have any need to change it, but I just was asking.
I, maybe in a question I have is, why this difference is here? Because one says a letter signed by mayor that is associated with official action of the city and voice of the counselors who supported the letter versus a city manager, the city manager signing, meaning official action by the city and unified voice. So where did that distinction come in between the mayor versus the city manager signing? And if it's the mayor, it is the voice only of the counselors who support it, and if the city manager signs, it is a unified voice.
So Olivier, one of the challenges that we've had in the past is that if a letter was signed by the mayor with council support, so it was a council majority, there were sometimes counselors who, in all good faith within themselves, could not support that letter. And so that was one of the reasons why we looked at the change, so that it represented those that supported it rather than the entire council. And, and that part absolutely makes sense to me. So if anybody, are you recommending a change?
No, I was just trying to understand why the distinction was made in that sense, but in general, I think it's fine by me.
Okay. Then if nobody has any concerns, let's move on to our next topic. We have 12.3, City Update.
Mayor, could I get a approval of that item with a motion?
Sorry. Thank you. Would someone go to make a motion?
I motion to approve the action regarding city council operation processes and policies. Is that an appropriate motion?
It is. Is there a second?
A second. Oh, Jessica, did I interrupt you? You go ahead.
The wonders of Zoom. Any further discussion? Oh, may we have a vote, please? Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Buell? Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Now we're on to 12.3, City Update.
No city update tonight, mayor and council. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now we're going on to Section 13, Council Reports and Actions, and our first one is 13.1, Discussion and Possible Appointments to Boards and Commissions. And I believe that earlier we considered that we might create a special city council meeting to finish this up, because it could be an hour or more of conversation. Is that still consensus among council? Yes, no? Yes, nods, no's?
Works for me.
Okay, all right, so that's, Jose, you got, you got that direction? Yeah, okay, thank you. So then we'll move on to 13.2, Discussion and Possible Appointments of City Council Liaisons to Boards and Commissions. We've, we've all had a conversation about our preferences for boards and commissions, and I'm guessing, unless, do we have any more, well, do we have any more discussion about the conversations that we had before? Do we have any changes, thoughts, considerations?
Well, maybe, I want to bring up one thing. I, I think we pretty much agreed, you know, on the split up, but the only condition was I took on the National, what is the former word?
Natural Lands.
Advisory Board, as it was to be combined with, which one is that here?
The Parks and Rec. And we haven't actually done that yet. So we do need to address the Natural Lands Board Liaison at some point. I was wondering if maybe we might go ahead and approve the ones that we are. and approve the ones that we are, that we think are appropriate. And then we can talk about the natural lands and see if someone wants to pick it up. Would that work?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm going to read the lists of preferences. And then if someone would want to make a motion about that, that would be great. So Jessica's boards and commissions would be the Airport Commission, the Strategy and Long-Term Finance Committee, and the Creative Economy Commission. Did I have that right, Jessica? Great, okay. And Olivier would be Multimodal, Parks and Rec, the FLC Senate, and the Southwest Cog?
Correct.
Okay. Barbara, you have the Infrastructure Advisory Board, the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, the Community Relations Commission, and as an adjunct to that, the Citizens Police Advisory Committee. Excellent. Melissa, Colorado Municipal League, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Library. And I was doing the La Plata Economic Development Alliance, and the Regional Housing Authority, or whatever group gets formed out of that, and Visit Durango. So do I hear a motion?
I'll move to, oh, go ahead, Olivier.
It's fine. I move to approve the county and boards and commissions, council boards and commission liaison positions as read out by Mayor Baxter.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Nope. Ms. Phillips, may we have a vote, please?
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Yuzo?
Yes.
Mayor Prokam Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. So now we have the Natural Lands Board to discuss. And I'm currently the liaison for it. So does anyone else have any interest in doing that or taking this one on? Okay, let me check and make sure I don't have a conflict with the other things. Oops.
I think if, I hate to do this, but not because I don't enjoy it, because I do, but I've been on it for two years, and I was hoping someone else might be interested in it. But I will, if it works for you guys, I can do that liaison position. At least temporarily.
Is that position, Kim, the same night as the SALT Fab or as the IAB? It's on a Monday night, correct?
It is. So the Natural Lands Board is Monday at 6:00, the SALT Fab is Monday at 4:30, and the infrastructure is Monday at 4:30. So what I was doing was doing the infrastructure at 4:30, and the natural lands at 6:00, and it worked out really well. Hint, hint.
What I'm willing is to be an alternate until we resolve what is needed, if a combination makes sense.
Yeah, okay. That works for me. So I would be willing to be the liaison with Mayor Prokam Noseworthy assisting that, and as we have the conversation of whether or not we combine the two boards, and then whatever the outcome is there. All right. Do we need to vote on that? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, 13.3, Discussion and Possible Action on Moving City Council Meetings to In-Person and Setting a Date for In-Person Meetings to Begin. Does anyone have any comments on what we think our timing might be, or what we might be comfortable with, or how it might work? Or Jose, do you have any logistical conversations?
We, from a staff perspective, we've been working on it. We are shooting to be ready, you know, probably June 1st might be a little tough, but by the mid, the second meeting in June, if that was the will of the council, just with making sure from a staff perspective that we had time to be prepared for any time that the city council would decide to go back to, to go into in-person. And we are planning on doing the hybrid model so that we could look at having Zoom still as availability for those in the public. So we are working through those scenarios as we speak. But I did know that there was, through study session, there had been some comments, and some dialogue that is, if the council wanted to go back to in-person. So just wanted to have that opportunity to give us staff as much time as possible, just to know if the council was looking to do that. And if so, what might that target range be?
So you mentioned being able to do a hybrid Zoom so that the public can also still attend that way. Would that also be possible for counselors also? Or is that not so far in what you've been working on?
We could definitely keep taking a look and seeing. I don't know that answer specifically in regards to how that could work with counselors doing it. But if that's what the council would like us to be prepared for, we can definitely work that in and start working that way as well.
The reason why I ask is, at least for me personally, I think that participation of all five counselors is one of the more important things we can do. But I also recognize that sometimes we can't be physically in Durango at the right time. So possibly, that would be an avenue that we could use, you know, maybe you'd say three times a year or something like that, you know, nothing extraordinary. But just so we do have the capability of having five counselors at every possible meeting, if they can attend.
I'll just add, I was at a chamber business meeting today, and they made just a fabulous investment in some equipment. And they had definitely a hybrid form of meeting, and they had eight people up on the, you know, wall, on a big screen, and looking down on the boardroom table. So you could see all the board members at the same time. And it was very effective. There was probably 50/50, 50 people at the table and 50 people on the screen. And I don't know if we can replicate that in our boardroom. But it is something that I would love staff to take a look at, if you're able to go and look at their boardroom, because it does allow for flexibility. And in the past, we've had counselors call in, you know, on the phone. But it's way more effective, I think, if you can actually see them and have them still be in attendance virtually than just a phone call. And I agree with Mayor Baxter that there are times when being at least a present virtually is better than not being there at all.
Right. And we have set a new precedent for what present means now. And so I think that was within our daily work to be able to do something like that. Counselor Noseworthy, did you?
Yeah, I agree with Melissa's comments. And I also would say that sometimes you're just not, like, you're feeling very, very sick, but you just, you still want to participate. You want to be there for the vote, but you really need to be at home. And so I think there are situations that this is open. I'd also like to suggest that when we do this, maybe our first run is a study session rather than a full city council meeting, so we can work out some of the kinks of such a system.
And I know we had it on the agenda for tonight, but I would suggest that we should, you know, also maybe even bring this up some more in the retreat, in case we want to just finalize policy around it or something. I just think it's a, I thought that's really where we were going to be talking about this, is in our retreat. So, but I know, Jose, that you wanted time to get things ready. And I actually do think that if we decide to go in this way, it might be a worthwhile investment. I know the chamber invested $3,500 in this equipment. So it's an investment. But it was truly phenomenal, as someone who is attending virtually. I felt like I was in the room.
Dirk, are there legal questions or issues about this?
Well, we need to change our policy because our current policy was sort of drafted as an all or nothing. In other words, that council would either be all present or not because the telephonic policy that we had before, pre-COVID, did allow people to attend council meetings via telephone. That policy doesn't allow for a vote. So I think that a lot of places, you're going to this type of model. I think that we are going to have, we are living in a new reality in terms of what present means. So I think you can develop a policy around what the meeting protocols are going to be and what the policy is going to be. But this will require some changes to the current policies because we did have a telephonic policy before, and that was before any of us really thought about using this sort of Zoom format. And also, we adopted an emergency order that allowed for council meetings to be virtual, but not really the mix of the two. So it will require some policy changes around this.
And I think it's worthwhile. I mean, there's a lot of various reasons why, over a four-year period of time, that someone is on council, may need to be coming in virtually. I know of a congressperson that, for our district, that has situations where they have to, they're going by virtual to the state. And so I think, you know, it is a new day, and she's still able to do her work very effectively. And so I'd like to make sure that we, I recognize that in-person is definitely preferable for me, whenever I am available to do it. But I just want to keep that option available so that we can still do our business to the best of our ability, when we can't physically be there.
Would council support having Dirk develop a policy that would allow for this?
Yes. And Kim, you mentioned, you know, parameters around, maybe, I mean, you mentioned like three or four meetings a year, I'm assuming city council meetings a year, where you may not be in person. But Melissa's point actually talks about, you know, something like, you know, some kind of family situation that really requires you to not necessarily be present. And so I'm trying to figure out how we can be flexible, but yet, not, to your point, not be excessive.
Usually, what you do is you say something like three meetings a year without prior permission of the rest of council. And obviously, if it was some sort of medical issue or some issue like that, why would we deny that? I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I'm actually, just as one counselor, suggesting that in, I'd like more freedom to be able to not have a limit. I want to be able to do my work as an elected official in the best capacity that I can. And for me, being present, I might be present 100% of the time, truly. But I do envision, and I do see where there could be certain situations with work, with people's work, with sickness, with illness, with family, with home remodels, whatever it might be, where for periods of time, you're taken away. And so to be able to still do your work is essential. In the case of our Congresswoman, she literally said, I will not be able to serve. And so policies were changed and made so that she could continue to do her work because it's, you know, it's an elected official, and she wanted to keep working. And I have a lot of respect for that and appreciation for the state recognizing that people can still be effective virtually. So anyway, I just wanted to know that.
I think we could write a policy that could allow for those kind of exceptions very easily. I just would not want there to be a counselor who didn't show up for any meetings in person ever. That changes the dynamics so significantly, just because they didn't want to.
I agree with that. And that counselor would have, you know, have to face reelection by the people at some point, too. You know what I mean? It's just the way it happens. And so anyway, it's food for thought. It's mine.
So I think I saw yeses from at least four counselors. So Dirk, would you be willing to then take that on for us?
Well, I'll gather up some. I know that other municipalities have, are moving toward the same model. So I assume we won't have to reinvent the wheel. We can see what's working for other people as well. I'll look into that.
All right. Okay, thank you. Jose, is that what you needed? Oh, sorry, Melissa.
Well, we, since we're on this topic, when will we talk about the structure of our meetings? And, because we also mentioned the possibility of combining them, study sessions. And so that's, I guess, why I thought we were kind of talking about all of this in our retreat. So.
Yeah, that's what I think, that's the retreat topic. I think Jose just needed some guidance on this so that he could have staff prepared and not be cut. We go, yeah, we want to meet next meeting. And he goes, oops, wait a minute, we're not ready for that, right? So I think that was the need there.
So if we discuss this, if we discuss it at our retreat, which is early June, the earliest Jose may be able to pull something together might, and if we start with a study session, might be like the end of June, because by the end of June, maybe setting something up.
And then we'd have a policy possibly ready to discuss and decide upon to that way.
That would definitely work. I mean, I think the genesis of this item was that there had been some conversations by counselors that were talking about going to in-person. And it was just to make sure that if that was something that may have had the will of the council, that, as the mayor said, I wouldn't, staff wouldn't be caught flat-footed if all, so it's like, oh, let's just make it next meeting. I could say, oh, okay. So at least now I can have a feel of that. It looks either probably mid to even late June. Maybe we talk about it more at the retreat. But I know now that it's not going to be something imminent within the next couple of meetings. We still have time to continue to work and get preparations ready for the chambers.
And I also like to say, I like Melissa's idea of looking into something that can really make it feel as though people are in the room.
The Economic Alliance did that, too, at their last meeting. It worked really well. Okay, so on to 13.4, Board and Commission Council Liaison Reports. I'd actually like to combine this with just any other reports you'd also like to make. So if you have a listed board and commission, please combine that with your reports. Anyone like to go first? Okay. Melissa, go for it.
So just a quick update on SALT Fab. They met on May 3rd. And just so you are aware, they will be bringing their recommended and approved long-term planning policy, operating budget policy, and general fund reserve policy to city council on the June 1st meeting, just so you're aware. So lots of work going on there. At the chamber board meeting today, we heard from Jeff Johnson from the Durango-Silberton Narrow Gauge Railroad, very interesting update on the train activities. They're operating now at 100% capacity with the new guidelines, three trains a day, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, and 9:30, all trains out of Durango. And the general sentiment from Jeff Johnson was that they're really feeling the support of the community, and that there's a very positive sentiment. They're feeling good. So that was nice to hear. I also wanted to let people know in the general community, if they're interested, they announced this at the chamber. I think it's important, that Leadership La Plata is taking applications for next year, and they're due May 31st. And their applications are available on leadershiplapata.org. It's a great program for connections and community and leadership development. So if people are interested. And then a couple things on CML. The first, most important, just in case I don't have time, is that I wanted to see if there's council support to take a position, as I told you guys in the email, on Senate Bill 21260, the Sustainability of the Transportation System, often referred to as the Transportation Funding Bill. And lots of talk about this going on at CML and at CAST, about that this is the last shot we have at statewide funding for transportation. And the bill is passed out of the Senate, it's going to move to the House, and will likely go to the Transportation and Local Government Committee. And I think it would be, you know, really a great step for us if we signed a letter by whomever on council supported that letter, and sent that to the House of Representatives and the bill sponsors, because it might be our last shot at transportation funding that we desperately need. So that was my most important thing for CML and a couple others. But first, I wanted to see if there was some support for that.
And I'll jump in, that CAST, also the Board of Directors wants to send a letter from the board. But Melissa, I certainly support sending a letter as an individual council to the Senate authors as well, the bill authors. I think, I think we sent something around, Melissa, we were great minds thinking alike. She sent it off on the transportation proposal. It's, you've got a document, but it does talk about saving Coloradans money and time spent on the roads, funding for a transportation system that supports the economy and improves air quality. Most important to me, establish a sustainable funding source for our transportation system. So I think that's really important for us, particularly as we look at reduced funding right now from the state.
And funding available for multimodal projects. So. So really good opportunity for additional fund. And, and so, other councilors, do you support that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay. You got direction on that one.
Okay. So then, when we do this, because now that I'm kind of new to the CML, do we direct staff to write the letter? And then does the mayor sign it on behalf of all of council, just with all of our names since we just signed this new policy?
That's usually the way things work, yes. Excuse me. Jose, is that in your way of thinking, too? Jose, does that fit in with your way of thinking, too?
It does, as long as there's nobody who opposes or has opposition to it. Right now, I'm not seeing that, so.
Great.
That would fit into it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I just, I was just gonna say, I will inform CAST that our council was unanimous in its support. Great. The only other thing I wanted to tell you guys, if you haven't, if you're not aware already, but I think since we, several councilors wrote a letter, that Senate Bill 2162, the bill on policing in jails, is being killed, quote unquote, killed. And there are going to be a new bill to replace it, Senate Bill 21273. I think that they said that the main concern under the old bill with Senator Pete Lee was that the initial bill would have prevented police from arresting people accused of, you know, class five and six felonies after it was amended. And under this new bill, it will still mandate that officers not arrest people who are suspected of committing a range of crimes, burlow felony level. But, and so, so it kind of reduces it even further. They can, they, they're, they're, they're still suggesting that they not arrest it, but it's even a lower amount. So it's going back. So the, the original one that, that we were opposing did die, just to let you guys know.
Excellent. Next, who would like to speak?
I can just mention that I attended the BID board meeting. They went over finances and the success of the Spring Rewards Program. Don't have anything to bring for, to the council, but just a short summary.
Thank you.
And I'll just jump in that I, I attended, it's not really a formal, but I did agree to, to serve as a city council liaison to this group. It's the Southwest Coalition of Opioid Overdose Prevention. And we're, as a group, working together to plan a really big proposal for funding to address this. It's been a, it'll be probably a year-long effort. And we are looking at the first round of the draft going out in June. And so I've just been participating and being more informed. But the group that is working has done a lot of work to put this together. And I'm hopeful that we'll see significantly, significant grant funding for this. And then I will just throw out that Olivier, the mayor and I attended, met with the governor for lunch on Saturday. And I thought we all did a very good job of presenting the needs of the community and what the city council's priority around, around issues of workforce, housing, and transportation. And also how we were in really strong alignment with the county commissioners. I think you, from that meeting, you got a real sense that we work together, want to work together. We have our own issues that we need to address and our own constituents that we have to think about. But I came away with a real sense that we are a city council and a Board of County Commissioners who do work to solve problems.
Thank you, Barbara. Jessica, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I have had no Boards and Commissions meetings yet.
Well, you, you will after tonight. Just to mention, I don't believe the Parks and Rec Advisory Board had a liaison at their last meeting. The Infrastructure Advisory Board meeting from Monday, the 3rd, was canceled. And the Natural Lands Preservation Board meeting was, was great. And I was, oh, here's my notes right here. They did a review of the 2022 Capital Improvement Plan and a review of the Durango Mesa Park Land Acquisition, the 1A, as well as horse gulch wayfinding signage and a few other project updates. So it was pretty basic and straightforward and that was about it. I wanted to make sure that we put the question on the retreat of CML attendance for city councilors in September. So I want to make sure that gets on the, on the, on the list so we can talk about if we're going, who's going, how we're going. And I also wanted to mention that I attended the Visit Durango meeting today. And one of the big challenges that I have heard, not just there, but at other meetings I've attended, is our restaurants and other businesses are very challenged by finding employees these days. And some of them are going so far as to close a day or two a week. So I, I really encourage people to get out there and get a job because there's lots of jobs out there. Support our businesses and support our community. So, thank you. Any other comments? All right. Well, then I would say that we're adjourned. Thank you very much.